Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome everyone to the Washington County Board of Education's April Meeting. I have the pleasure of presiding over the meeting in absence of our Chairman, Mr. Urban. He is with the family of Zoe Shipley at the hospital this evening. And during our moment of silence, I would ask that you remember the family during this difficult time. Our community is suffering and our children are, their hearts are broken, and I would just like for you to remember this family. After a moment of silence, Taylor Campbell will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to recognize any county commissioners that are here this evening. There's Debbie Jones. And our principals. There's two, three of them out there. Our teachers. The parents of our students. We've got to do a big, big thank you for attending. I'd like a consideration of the consent agenda.
So, ma'am?
Second.
No call vote?
Mr. Hamon?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanger?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
I move for consideration of the meeting agenda.
As the Chairman, I move, we approve the consent agenda for the meeting. Second.
Do we have any discussion? This is for the meeting agenda, but that was the consent agenda first. This is for the meeting agenda. No discussion? No call vote?
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanger?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hamon?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes. So, I will turn it over to you, Dr. Dallinger.
Thank you. Madam Sheriff, first. Tonight, we have with us a group of performers from Ridgeview Elementary School. Josh McFadden, Josh, come on up. He's the music educator at Ridgeview, and we are going to see a takeoff of a well-known feature-length movie. Mr. McFadden, the stage is yours.
Okay. Hold on. Hold on. Okay. And I'm going to take a moment to plug the bus company that we use here. This is our next visit was to see the Confederate submarine, H.L. Hunley. And this is the tour bus company. It's called Toddler Coach, based in Gray, Tennessee. Highly recommend them. Jackie, the owner and driver, has done all seven years for us, and you could not ask for a better company to take care of you through your travel needs. So, if you've got a group that needs to go somewhere, highly recommend giving them a call, and he will treat you right, and he will give you one of the best prices that it's around. Really, as far as an affordability thing, if it was not for him, it would, a lot of these trips would be kind of out of the price range of what our students don't be able to afford to do, because they do pay for all of this themselves. I try to work out, you know, as good a price as I can get for them, and Jackie has really been great with helping us. So, as I said, we got the, we had a really rare treat. I'm going to talk about this one just a little bit, because I don't think the students maybe don't appreciate how rare this was. The Confederate submarine was the first submarine to sink a ship in combat, and this was during the Civil War in 1864. And it was discovered in the 90s, and then they were managed to bring it back up and begin restoration operations on it in the early 2000s. And since then, it's been in this big tank, and usually it's covered in water. Now, we got to visit the Hunley three years ago when we took our last group to Charleston, and then it was flooded in water, and it usually is that way most of the time. But on the day that we got to go, they had just drained the tank, and you get to see the submarine in kind of all its glory and all its detail, which is something that very few people get. The guy that took us through and talked to us about it, he had never seen it like this before. He was taking as many pictures of it as we were, so we were, we're kind of a very rare treat there. Guys, hopefully.
I would have to say that this was my favorite part of the trip. One, because I had heard of it, but not looked into it as much. And once I found out how many men were in that submarine and how cramped and tight it was, and that they were in there for up to two hours with no light except just a lantern, it amazed me, and also the number of deaths that happened in it. But they kept on doing different missions just to see how far that they could push themselves.
There at the museum, they've got a replica of it. Some of our students took advantage of getting in there and experiencing the conditions inside that thing. It's something that I hadn't learned this time. You never get too old to learn things, is that when they were in this submarine, the way they powered it was cranking that crank that you see there in front of Caleb's legs there. But they were pretty big guys like he was, and they couldn't do that sitting down. So, for the two, three, four, five or more hours that they were in that submarine going out into the harbor, they had to stand kind of like he is with their backs up against the top of that thing, being over that crankshaft in complete darkness and stale air, and just really gave you a good appreciation to the ordeal that these men went through and the dedication that they must have had to have also. Mr. Goode took it there and tried it for something also. All right. And then from there, after we left the Hunley, we went to Patriots Point, South Carolina, which has a lot of naval vessels on display. This is USS Yorktown. They had a destroyer, the USS Laffey submarine, the USS Quagamore. And then they also have a Vietnam exhibit as well, plus a bunch of the aircraft onboard the aircraft here. You got any here?
Um, this picture doesn't really do it justice. I mean, no offense. It's a great picture, but it's just, it's a great picture, but it just doesn't explain like the size and how massive that ship is. Like, whenever you're on it, like, there's so many different exhibits, like woven throughout the whole entire, like, interior. I don't, we didn't even get to, how many hours?
We were there for thirty hours. We really didn't.
My group got lost in it, so. There's not a, like, hands-on, like, exhibits and everything. It's like going to the hands-on museum, but like, yeah. But it was amazing. And then whenever we got up to the top kind of deck there, you can't even, like, fathom, like, you feel so small and insignificant, like, on top of that thing, because it is huge. And the view up there was, wow, it was amazing.
And then that evening, and I told you we pack a lot into these trips, so on the same day, that evening, we go back downtown for this time a pirate-themed tour of downtown Charleston. We're talking about the history of pirates and their association with the city of Charleston. And anybody here, Joe, I know you were a big on pirates there, maybe you guys?
Yeah. I didn't really know, I did nothing about pirates, but it was interesting. Our tour guide here, again, I really have to say, the tour guides are what really made these walks and these carriage rides and everything. Really, really colorful character. I don't, I mean, like, she was an awesome person. She was very funny. She was very well-knowledged. And, I mean, some of the stuff she told us, it was just very, I would not have wanted to be a pirate in Charleston, to say the least. It sounded like an awful time, but.
All right. All right. So, and again, that kind of wrapped up day two, and I think we were getting pretty tired by the end of this. The next morning, we go to one of the local plantations over on James Island, which is real, just outside of Charleston, to McLeod Plantation, and learned a little bit about the plantation system in Charleston prior to the Civil War, and then, you know, how that changed and so forth after the war ended, and with the abolition of slavery and so forth. Anybody have any comments about the plantation? John, feel free to drop in at any time.
Sure. I know, I completely agree with you, Joe. The tour guides are what make these things. He just told us all about how we romanticize, like, this image of the Old South and how they actually redecorated the house so it would look like, I guess, I guess, our romanticizations of what it was like. But, you know, it was just absolutely flabbergasting at some of the, some of the facts, like, people were living in the old slave houses until the 1980s, 1990s. That was when the, they actually converted it into a plantation for people to walk through it and take tours there. And it was just such a good experience and a wild, wonderful experience.
And after leaving the plantation, then sort of the grand finale of the trip was the boat ride out to Fort Sumter out in the middle of Charleston Harbor, which, of course, this was, you know, a pivotal point in the Civil War, the first shots of the Civil War taking place here. And then the war kind of revolved around this for the next four years, and then we learned that Fort Sumter also got to play a role in harbor defense after the Civil War, all the way up through the World Wars as well. Anybody have anything about the Sumter trip? Here's our boat that we're either coming or going. I can't remember which here. Interior pictures of the fort. And here is our whole group together out on the fort right before we, or I think right after we got on the island to start going through and visiting the fort. Any comments?
They've said several times that the tour guides made the trip, but for me, the students made the trip, because we have the best students, the tremendous group there. We've done this for several years. We always have a great group. This is probably our best group. I mean, it was just amazing. And it's hard to be the best group when you've had all those other groups that were so good.
And coming back, we, the bus had some mechanical issues, the air conditioning system. And so, it was a little bit stuffy, especially we got stuck in some traffic, just sitting on the interstate. It was about close to 80 degrees up to that last day that we were there. It got hot in the trip. I did not hear one complaint, one drought, and actually, this was a very musical group. They literally sang nonstop all the way from Charleston to about Irwin, I think, is when we kind of wrapped it up. So, they, you know, very good spirits. And I, Mr. Goode said, this was absolutely one of the best groups we've taken on these trips. And so, I keep telling Mr. Goode, I said, you know, first time we have any trouble, I'm not doing this anymore, so no troubles, I guess we're going to have to do it again next year.
I would like to add something about the trip. I kind of, I love history. I really do. I love learning about it, otherwise I wouldn't be a big fan of US history. But I'm a very hands-on learner, and sometimes it's hard for me to retain history very well just to test on it, because I, it's hard to learn history hands-on. But this field trip really fulfilled that for me, because it was like I was making connections with all the things we had learned about. It would be like, oh, we literally just talked about this in US history, and I'm standing here, like, I'm here, this is what we learned about. And it really made me have a deeper understanding and appreciation for US history, and I'm just, me and all my classmates are just so thankful for Mr. Goode and Mr. King and taking time out of their schedules if they care so much about our students to plan these huge trips for us that are just so impactful with all these awesome activities. So, it was very beneficial entertaining-wise and actively.
There's nothing more I can say any better than what she's saying right there. So, does anybody have any questions for the?
Do board members have a question?
Any students, especially?
What's the difference in a submarine and a submersible? Which was the Hunley? Submarine or a submersible?
Uh-oh. We're calling a submarine.
Well, the difference is, a submarine can go underwater and stay for long periods of time. A submersible can only stay for about two hours, and that's why the Hunley is a sub-
Highly recommend, give them a call and he will treat you right and he will give you one of the best prices that it's around. Really, as far as an affordability thing, if it was not for him, it would, a lot of these trips would be kind of out of the price range of what our students don't be able to afford to do because they do pay for all of this themselves. I try to work out, you know, as good a price as I can get for them and Jackie has really been great with, with helping us. So, as I said, we got the, we had a really rare treat, I'm gonna talk about this one just a little bit because I don't think the students, maybe don't appreciate how rare this was. The Confederate submarine was the first submarine to sink a ship in combat and this was during the Civil War in 1864. And it was discovered in the nineties and then they were managed to bring it back up and began restoration operations on it in the early 2000s. And since then, it's been in this big tank and usually it's covered in water. Now, we got to visit the Hunley three years ago when we took our last trip to Charleston and then it was flooded in water and it usually is that way most of the time. But on the day that we got to go, they had just drained the tank and you get to see the submarine in kind of all its glory and all its detail, which is something that very few people get. The guy that took us through and talked to us about it, he had never seen it like this before and he was taking as many pictures of it as we were. So, we were, we're in kind of a very rare treat there.
I would have to say that this was my favorite part of the trip. One, because I had heard of it but not looked into it as much. And once I found out how many men were in that submarine and how cramped and tight it was and that they were in there for up to two hours with no light except just a lantern, it amazed me. And also the number of deaths that happened in it, but they kept on doing different missions just to see how far that they could push themselves.
There at the museum, they've got a replica of it, some of our students took advantage of getting in there and experiencing the conditions inside that thing. It's something that I hadn't learned this time, you never get too old to learn things, is that when they were in this submarine, the way they powered it was cranking that crank that you see there in front of Caleb's legs there. But they were pretty big guys like he was and they couldn't do that sitting down. So, for the two, three, four, five or more hours that they were in that submarine going out into the harbor, they had to stand kinda like he is with their backs up against the top of that thing, being over that crankshaft in complete darkness and stale air. And it's really gave you a good appreciation to the ordeal that these men went through and the dedication that they must have had to had also. Mr. Goode took it there and tried it for something also. Alright, and then from there, after we left the Hunley, we went to Patriots Point, so here in Atlanta, which has a lot of naval vessels on display. This is USS Yorktown, they had a destroyer, the USS Laffey, a submarine, the USS Quagamore, and then they also have a Vietnam exhibit as well, plus a bunch of the aircraft onboard, the aircraft here.
This picture doesn't really do it justice, I mean, no offense, it's a great picture, but... It's a great picture, but it just doesn't explain like the size and how massive that ship is. Like whenever you're on it, like there's so many different exhibits like woven throughout the whole entire like interior. I don't, we didn't even get to, how many hours?
We were there for thirty hours, we really did.
My group got lost in it, so, there's not a like hands-on like exhibits and everything, it's like going to the hands-on museum, but like, yeah. But it was amazing and then whenever we got up to the top kinda deck there, you can't even like fathom, like you feel so small and insignificant, like on top of that thing, it is huge and the view up there was, wow, it was amazing.
And then that evening, and I told you we pack a lot into these trips, so on the same day that evening, we go back downtown for this time a pirate-themed tour of downtown Charleston. We're talking about the history of pirates and their association with the city of Charleston. And, anybody here, Joe, I know you were a big on pirates there, maybe you guys?
Yeah, I didn't really know, I did nothing about pirates. It was interesting, our tour guide here, again, I really have to say, tour guides are what really made these walks and these carriage rides and everything. Really, really colorful character, I don't, I mean, like she was an awesome person, she was very funny, she was very well-knowledge. And, I mean, some of the stuff she told us, it was just very, I would not have wanted to be a pirate in Charleston to say the least, it sounded like an awful time, but...
Alright, now they're at, so, and again, that kind of wrapped up day two and I think we were getting pretty tired by the end of this. The next morning, we go to one of the local plantations over on James Island, which is real, just outside of Charleston, to McLeod Plantation. And learned a little bit about the plantation system in Charleston prior to the Civil War and then, you know, how that changed and so forth after the war ended and with the abolition of slavery and so forth. Any comments about the plantation? John, feel free to drop in at any time.
I know, I completely agree with you, Joe, the tour guides are what make these things. He just told us all about how we romanticized like this image of the old South and how they actually redecorated the house so it looked like, I guess, I guess our romanticizations of what it was like. But, you know, it was just absolutely flabbergasting at some of the, some of the facts, like people were living in the old slave houses until the 1980s, 1990s. That was when the, they actually converted it into a plantation for people to walk through it and take tours there. And it was just such a good experience and...
And after leaving the plantation, then sort of the grand finale of the trip was the boat ride out to Fort Sumter out in the middle of Charleston Harbor. Which, of course, this was a pivotal point in the Civil War, the first shots of the Civil War taking place here. Then the war kind of revolved around this for the next four years and then we learned that Fort Sumter also got to play a role in harbor defense after the Civil War, all the way up through the world wars as well. Same thing about the Sumter trip, here's our boat, either coming or going, I can't remember which here. Interior pictures of the fort and here is our whole group together out on the fort right before we, or I think right after we got on the island to start going through and visiting the fort.
They've said several times that the tour guides made the trip, but for me, the students made the trip because we have the best students, the tremendous group there, we've done this for several years. We always have a great group, this is probably our best group, I mean, it was just amazing. And it's hard to be the best group when you've had all those other groups that were so good.
And coming back, we, the bus had some mechanical issues, the air conditioning system went out. And so, it was a little bit stuffy, especially we got stuck in some traffic, just sitting on the interstate, it was about close to eighty degrees after that last day we were there. It got hot in the trip, I did not hear one complaint, one drought, and actually this was a very musical group. They literally sang non-stop all the way from Charleston to, to Mount Earland, I think, is when we kind of wrapped it up. So, very good spirits, and like Mr. Goode said, this was absolutely one of the best groups we've taken on these trips. And so, I keep telling Mr. Goode, said, you know, first time we have any trouble, I'm not doing this anymore, so, no troubles, I guess we're gonna have to do it again next year.
I would like to add something about the trip. I kind of, I love history, I really do, I love learning about it, otherwise I wouldn't be at U.S. History. But I'm a very hands-on learner and sometimes it's hard for me to retain history very well, to take a test on it because I, it's hard to learn history hands-on. But this field trip really fulfilled that for me because it was like I was making connections with all the things we had learned about. It would be like, oh, we literally just talked about this in U.S. History and I'm standing here, like I'm here, this is what we learned about. And it really made me have a deeper understanding and appreciation for U.S. History and I'm just, me and all my classmates are just so thankful for Mr. Goode and Mr. King. And taking time out of their schedule simply care so much about our students to plan these huge trips for us that are just so impactful with all these awesome activities. So, it was very beneficial entertaining-wise and actively.
There's nothing more I can say any better than what she's saying, she's right there. So, does anybody have any questions?
Do board members have a question?
Any students especially?
What's the difference in a submarine and a submersible? Which was the Hunley? Submarine or a submersible?
Uh-oh.
We're called a submarine.
Well, the difference is, a submarine can go underwater and stay for long periods of time, a submersible can only stay for about two hours. And that's why the Hunley is a submersible. They have to come up, open up the hatches and get some fresh air in and then they go back down.
Anybody else, any questions for anyone?
No, I, I love history too, so, I just wish you'd done that back when I was in. Except the kids, it may have been the last year we got together. But it'd be a reason you'd have been there.
How much did each student have to pay?
The total cost for each of the students was $220 and that included everything except the lunch and evening meals and then whatever they wanted to buy as far as shopping goes. But it included admission, everything, the bus, the hotel, and the hotel provided on my breakfast, so, it's a pretty good deal for three days. Three days.
How many?
Three days.
How many students?
Forty-nine. We would've had fifty, but we had one that got sick at the last minute, couldn't make it.
What age group?
Juniors and seniors. We appreciate you keeping doing this, so, thank you. Thank, appreciate y'all making the call.
Harry Nathan, thanks for bringing those kids. You guys didn't have to do this, you could've stayed, you could've just taught your classes and finished out the year, you didn't have to haul fifty kids through this. It's the kind of teachers these guys, the kind of teachers we've got at Washington State School.
Where are you going next year?
Next year, we're a bit more of a colonial-themed trip, going to Williamsburg, Yorktown, Jamestown, that part of Virginia. So, we pretty much all already have the plans. We'll save you seats. Alright, thank you.
I see some blue jackets in the room and for the uninitiated, that is not blue, that is national red and the other color is corn gold. And those jackets have been around for nearly seventy years and they are probably the most recognizable emblem of a youth organization on this planet. So, we have breakfast tonight, some students from the David Crockett FFA chapter. One of those students, Taylor Campbell, was elected president of the Tennessee Association of the FFA a little over two weeks ago. They've a major milestone in the history of the school, this is Crockett's second-ever state president, the first going back to 1988 when I was teaching agriculture. I emailed Ron Arnett the other day to get some background on what the chapter would present to the board tonight and he said he didn't know. He said, "Just turn it over to Taylor and she'd do whatever she had prepared," so this is why she stayed president. So, instead of teachers, Taylor, what did you got prepared for us tonight?
Actually, Jay Welch is gonna speak first, she's got a few remarks to make and then I'll follow up after her. Yeah, Taylor asked me to tell you guys just a little bit about what our chapter has done throughout this past year. So, I had a little PowerPoint, but if you don't have that, that's fine. Ooh, do we? Excellent. Okay, while we're doing that, ready, just thank you guys for inviting us to come, take part in this meeting and also for your continued support of agricultural and vocational education throughout this past year. So, I am Jay Welch, I'm a senior at David Crockett this year and I've been the vice president there for the past year. So, that has given me kind of a front row seat to some awesome accomplishments by our members, so I figured I would give you guys a little list. And that's all of the things that we have been working on this past year. Cause the minute that last year ended, we already had students working towards their goals for this year. So, the first month of summer, we had students staying after every day practicing for forestry, state forestry is right up there at the top. And that is one of eight competitions that we were able to represent our school on the state level at this year, so that's something we're super proud of. You can see on those lists, the ones with the little asterisk next to them are ones that we did for the first time ever this year. So, we're really trying to branch out this year and try some new things. And something else I would like to call your attention to a little bit is not only have, has our chapter been able to represent us on the state level, but also step up and go to the national level too. We had two teams this October that competed at the national level. So, on the left is our nursery team, which I was super excited to be able to be a part of, and then we have our floriculture team. So, floriculture got a silver emblem, which means they were twenty-second in the whole nation, which is a super awesome thing. We're super proud of them and they're gonna be competing again for us this year, the same team as the national nursery team. So, we really look forward to seeing some great things from them. And then the nursery team was able to set a Tennessee state record for our placing at the national level. So, that was the national runner-up, so we are excited about that. But also, not only does our program prepare people for career success and give you the confidence you need through competitions, but also a ton of leadership training that we've done. And it's all so student-led, which is the reason that I'm here today and the reason that Taylor has been able to do the awesome things that she's done. And our other members have been able to become great speakers and just do such awesome things this past year. So, we do our officer training and retreat and then a chapter leadership training conference, which is just our own members putting it on and like setting their goals and priorities for the year. And practicing how to be better speakers and better leaders, so that's something we're super proud of. This year, we were also able to attend the Washington Leadership Conference, which is in DC, is the largest youth leadership conference in the nation. So, super excited to have been able to participate in that. And then Tennessee Leadership Conference, Taylor Campbell actually got to be part of the group that put that on because she was a regional officer this past year and they did an excellent job. And then we went to our national convention, of course, and then our state convention. And at that state convention is when Taylor was inaugurated as president of East Tennessee, or not East Tennessee, I'm sorry, Tennessee FFA. So, she would like to go ahead and come up and present whatever she has for us. Alright, hey everybody, I'm Taylor Campbell, like Jay, I'm also a senior at David Crockett High School. I've been a member of David Crockett FFA over the past four years and it's just given me so many opportunities to grow as a leader and grow as a person. My advisors here today can tell you that when I was a freshman, I didn't talk to anyone, I was extremely shy. So, I'm extremely thankful for all the opportunities I've gotten through FFA and the opportunity to lead Tennessee FFA as the state president. So, around December, I decided that I wanted to run for a position on the state officer team. After serving as chapter secretary for two years and as East Tennessee regional secretary for one year. So, I made that decision and as soon as I made that decision, I had to start preparing. And there are many parts to the preparing process for running for state office. I had to learn how to conduct myself in an interview, which was very hard, like I said before, I was very shy and sometimes I still kinda am a little bit shy. So, it was a little bit out of my comfort zone, but it was a lot of fun getting to work on those skills that I know I can use later on in my future. And I also had to learn about agriculture issues, which for me was the hardest part of the preparing process. Because it felt like I had to know every single thing that there was going on in the agriculture industry, which as we know, it's an enormous industry that encompasses everything that we do. So, I was constantly on my toes keeping up with legislation and with what the American Farm Bureau was interested in as far as policy goes. I also had to focus on studying FFA knowledge, which as Dr. Flannery said, the FFA is a very old organization, it's something that's constantly innovating. So, there was a lot of things I had to memorize to make sure that I knew everything I could about the FFA and about our history and about how the FFA operates. And after that, I had to learn how to master parliamentary procedure, which was definitely the hardest part of it aside from agriculture issues. Because anyone that's ever done parliamentary procedure knows that it's a little bit confusing, I'm sure the school board members can tell you, parliamentary procedure is a little hard. So, after all that was over in March, I got to state convention, which is where the process began on Saturday morning. And that process consisted of a personal interview, which is about five minutes long, and then agriculture issues interview, which was also about five minutes, a test and a letter-writing activity. After that, the next day, we had our group interviews, which is where the nominating committee of twelve people would give us a prompt that we would work out with all the people in our group and do a presentation on it. So, for example, my group had to present three ideas that we had to propose to the delegates at the National FFA Convention. And this is something that state officers are required to do because we do serve as delegates at the National Convention. So, the FFA gives the members the opportunity to lead, to change things in the organization. So, it was really a great opportunity for me to understand what some of my responsibilities would be as a state officer. After the interview process was over, the state convention was in full swing and we started to work the convention as candidates. So, everyone at the convention was assigned a job and we had to help the convention staff with putting on the convention. So, my job was to work with VIP and award seating to make sure that every member or advisor or parent that was receiving some type of award knew where their VIP seat was for that event and how they could get backstage and ensure that they were on stage at the right time. So, it was a very high-strung job, it was very stressful, but it was very worth it. So, as we got closer to the end of the week, the nerves were high for every single candidate, there were twenty-two of us. And at times, we kind of felt like, what if we don't get it? You know, there's only eight positions on this team, who's gonna be the person that is elected out of this group of people? So, as all those thoughts were going through our minds, we finally got to Wednesday morning, which is when the state officer election was gonna be. So, if you wanna go ahead and play that video that I sent, it's just a three or four-minute video about the state officer election, pretty much just what goes on during that election. It should have sound, I can narrate it. So, essentially what goes on is they call out each position, starting with the sentinel. And all the candidates are standing in the back of the room, as you can see on the projection screen that's on the back of the stage. And the nerves are high, so we're all swaying, we can't quite stand still, and they call out the first name and that newly-elected state officer runs up the aisle to the stage in front of the room. And there are over three thousand FFA members in this room at this time, so it's very stressful, there's a lot of pressure not to lose your shoes. A girl that was elected to my team, who's elected the state secretary, actually did lose her shoes. So, that's her first experience with the Tennessee FFA members and that will be her legacy, so it's something that we've already bonded over as a team. So, they go from the sentinel, who is up on the stage right now, to the reporter and then the treasurer, the secretary, and then there are three vice presidents, one from West Tennessee, one from Middle and one from East. And then eventually the president. So, they call those all in order, so my name was the last to be called. So, you can expect, I was very nervous, I was all, I watched all of my friends go up there on the stage. I was so happy for them that they were getting that opportunity and whether or not I was gonna be elected, I was super excited for the opportunity that they were getting to serve Tennessee FFA. Because I know that everyone there worked super hard to get to the position that they are now and just to make it through that election process and to make it through preparing is a huge step and it's a huge accomplishment. But the moment that my name was called, you can see as it gets closer to the end of the video, my favorite part of this video is the reaction of the people in my FFA chapter. So, Ms. Katie McKinney back here recorded the video that you're watching right now. And they said, "And you're Tennessee FFA state president from the David," and as soon as they said David, it was just a deafening scream for everyone sitting around Katie, she recorded this video. And looking back on this video, I watch it almost daily, I'm reminded of how supportive people are in our FFA chapter and why I decided to run for state office in the first place. And that's to serve the people in FFA and to be a positive influence on this people. So, I'm very blessed to get to be a part of this. Moving forward, tomorrow I leave for our initial training, which is... I'm probably glad the volume isn't on right now, it's very, very loud. It was a great moment, it was just totally surreal. From that moment, as soon as I got up on the stage, I had to close out the convention, which is more parliamentary procedure, but it was a lot of fun, it was a great experience, something that I would not change for anything. But beginning tomorrow, I do have my initial training with my team, which will take place at Camp Plummets in Doyle, Tennessee. So, I'm very, very excited to get to learn from some trainers at National FFA about what it means to be a Tennessee FFA state officer and how I can best serve our state association.
I will say this, that Taylor spent probably, and I may be underestimating because I'm not sure, but three to four hours a day preparing for this for about four months. That's probably underestimating a few times to a lot of people, helping her along the way, but she's the one that took initiative to do it. There's fourteen thousand FFA members in the state of Tennessee, she ranks number one?
Largest high school organization on the planet. In 1984, we ran a young lady named Leanne West for state office and when they called her name, "Please Tennessee Vice President," my head missed a rafter to that room by about that. And I was just a teacher and I know how gut-wrenching that is and that video cannot do that process justice. Agriculture education, Crockett and Franklin, two of the great things about a great public school system. Thank you, young people, for being here, you make us proud. I don't wanna cut you off. Josh, how are those new knees doing? You got two brand-new knees.
It was kind of painful to see me in one of those pictures, they were all jacked up. They're straight now.
Alright, let's change gears just a little bit. A great many people do a great many things in the overall operation of Washington County schools. We have a lot of vastly different job descriptions among the talented members of our workforce, but the main thing we do is teach. Everything else we do is designed to support our teachers and what they do. We have six hundred and six teachers on staff, that is the count as of yesterday morning. Each year, we choose three to be teachers of the year in the three primary grade bands. And if we were an athletic team, these would be the most valuable players. If this were, if we were in show business, these would be Oscar winners or I guess Tony winners. At this time, I would like to present officially to the school board this year's teachers of the year. And what I wanna do is get a picture because we wanna put this out to the media like some of our broader school systems do. Get the newspaper and get on TV and just celebrate through the streets, folks. And we have a little check for you as well, the government had to take out their department, it's a check of a thousand dollars. That's what this school board voted to give you, so that's, I wish, they wish it could be more, but you mean a lot to us, you are the stars of our show. So, we'll start with the early grade band, Jackie Humble, come on up here. Come on down here, John, let's get behind these ladies and let's have a picture made.
Congratulations, ladies. Congratulations.
No, I'm waiting for everybody to get to the decision. I will. Bitch, if you'll step out half a step, no, don't just lean. One, two, three for me. Alright, thank you.
Wayne, you're always patient. Come on down for a fresh look.
Welcome up here. Good evening, everyone. We'll go over the building reports, which we always do every, every month and at the top, you can see our site work is building eighty percent complete with the total build to date being two million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and some change. And then the, the school building is at seventy, almost seventy-seven percent with nineteen million, four hundred and eleven thousand dollars of that built to date. So, and if you've not been out recently, that's, that coincides with where the progress, the project is, so it is moving on real well. The key plan, I took this, we took this aerial photo of the site and the main point to show here, you can see the... bus route coming in, and they will begin in as soon as the excavation is complete. Everything is progressing well there. I combined some of these, because, I mean, the toilets are the same in each area, but this is, this is the girls' toilets in the wings A, B, and E. A has the ceiling tiles in them, but they're all in very good shape. You can see they're putting up toilet accessories, the toilet partitions have been put up. And this is the boys' restrooms in those same three wings. Put some protective covering over some of the urinals and things, and as you can see, they've got protective covering down over the floors to protect the tile. In the B wing, they've started installing the doors. And what they're concentrating on throughout all these wings is they're getting all the tile put in the rooms first. That's why you will not see any tile flooring put in the hallways yet. That will be the last thing, as they go back out of the rooms, or out of these wings. And in B and E, they've already put up a lot of the marker boards, or probably 98% of them. They've got them sitting in A wing, ready to start installing those. And they've, just this past week, the first part of this week, they've begun putting in some of the interior storefront framing. This is over at the corner at the entrance into the E wing. And I took this shot of the gymnasium. You can see the ceiling has been painted, and they're in the process of painting the steel trusses, they're the color black. Actually, the wood flooring is scheduled to start in approximately two weeks in this area, so they're getting all their painting finished up. You can see on the walls there, you can still see some of the moisture-resistant gypsum board, the purple color, but they are working around painting all of that and getting all of that completed prior to the gym flooring going in. And this is some of the lockers in the, behind the gymnasium. They were working, they're working on that this week. You can see the wall top put up, the left side is the shower, they put in the shower basin, and the little blue line you see is their waterproofing that they've turned up to put that shower basin in. And they just actually placed that that morning, as a reason, it's still a dark color. And this is just turning around 90 degrees and looking at the other side of the wall. And that's pretty much, I failed to mention, the cafeteria and the kitchen area, all the quarry tiles down and covered up. Start taking some photos of all your sins, cardboard paper on the floors, I have very much to look at, but they are progressing well and on schedule.
For Jean.
Thank you.
Yes.
Additional questions? Living life as school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The annual agenda provides today a report of summer activities being presented to the board at their April meeting. Such a report is in your drop box, if you can look for it. It's called the Side of Summer Activities, and I am, or any of the supervisory staff present, can answer any questions about our summer work at this time. If you're looking at the report, there is an entry for traveling library. And we really don't know what we're going to do yet, but Dr. Adams, would you come forward, and at the very least, we can show you where we are with that project. You'll have a look at the screen.
Yes, sir. As you know, we've decided that we were going to help a young man, Zephaniah Wells, earn his Eagle Scout badge by creating a traveling library. It's much more complicated, I guess is a good word, than I thought it was going to be. Just about every CTE teacher at David Crockett is involved in this to some degree. We've had Ms. Chaney, Mindy Chaney, is the art teacher there, she's also the photography teacher and the yearbook teacher. She is sending me pictures as we go, so if we could kind of scroll through these a little bit, so I can scroll through. Mr. Freeman and his auto body class have matched the paint color to the wrap color that Mr. Tipton's graphic arts class is creating. We saw that on our school board visit, we went and visited his class. So, instead of trying to wrap the entire bus, we made the decision that we would paint part of the bus. So, Mr. Freeman was the first person to really get his hands on the bus, so he's done some paint job on it. The places that are still school bus yellow are the areas that we are going to wrap, that Mr. Tipton's class is designing and going to wrap the bus. So, here are just some pictures. We painted the front and the back, that light blue, we painted the top of the bus white. Then Ms. Chaney's art class got inside the bus and painted the ceiling of the inside white. And you can see the woodwork, that's Mr. Good's construction class, who are building the shelves. Once Mr. McAmis's drafting class got in and drew an inside picture of the bus, so we can know how big and what the dimensions are. I feel bad, I'm going to leave somebody out. I even had Mr. Lichens in the auto mechanic, we sold a bunch of his surplus materials to maybe have a place to put the bus to wrap it, because we need to put it inside, because it can't stay outside and be wrapped. I know more about this than I ever cared to.[974.00][974.00][laughter] So, here are some of the, some of the other pictures. This is in Mr. Freeman's place. Now, these are the pictures that Ms. Chaney's art class are coming up with. These will be put on stickers, and they'll put it on inside the bus. So, we, seriously, we involved a lot of people in doing this. This is just some of the artwork that we plan on producing, that will go back to Mr. Tipton, that I've not told yet, because he says bad things when he sees me coming, I know he does. He smiles at me, but I know he says bad things. He'll have to print these out and make the stickers. And that is a picture of what the shelving for the bus is actually going to look like. And Zephaniah and some of his troop members are going to come and stain those for us. So, we are involving Zephaniah in that as well, as well as Mr. Griffin, who is the Director of Washington County Library. He wants to know the dimensions of the shelves, so he knows how many big books he can put on them. So, have him got to the part where Mr. Fulbright and his people are going to put the hot spot in with the chromebooks. So, those are the pictures, and it's humming right along. I've set a target date for the second Saturday in May for this to be done. And then, the plan is to roll it out to the community, to help Zephaniah fulfill the roles that he needs it to fulfill to get his Eagle Scout badge, and then I think we're making plans to have it travel around, at least if not every day, every couple days, to all of our summer school sites, so our kids have an opportunity to maybe hopefully take a book, maybe keep it, we'll see.
So, when you get this one, John, you'll walk off the next one?
Well, Mr. Lichens, he's like, "You know what we should do? We should create a CTE traveling bus." I just turned around and walked off.[1095.76][1095.76][laughter] See if I have any questions where we're at?
Jerry, thanks for giving that credit. The plan is to have this in the Jonesboro Base Parade.
Yes.
You are partnering with the Jonesboro Washington County Public Library.
Yes, sir. To get the books, that's right.
Any questions? This has taken five years to get this to this point, so Jerry just got involved and it's taken off, so. Any questions? What it's going to do this summer, is anybody's guess at this point, but we're going to try to give away a lot of books, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, Dr. Adams.
Thank you.
Any other questions about summer activities? If all of you are able to see what's on there. It's about 95% paid for with federal funds, very little local funds. Okay, then we'll move ahead on the agenda. One of the great things about having student board members is working with some of the absolute best students in our two high schools. I think, I just want to say this out loud, the gentleman to my right, John Maddox, was recently named valedictorian of Daniel Bloom High School's class.[1165.12][1165.12][applause] Surely you're smart enough to give, but we don't ask you to have a board tonight.
All righty. So, what I'm going to be talking about tonight, obviously, we've had a busy month with all the stuff that we've been going over in the director's report. Lots of stuff was going on in the community, school, and clubs, and this is just a small part of what Washington County has experienced in March. So, the first thing is the learning with the arts through the decades at Grandview Elementary. So, over 850 students, family members, and staff spent the evening exploring the decades through the art, music, and art, music, and dance. So, I just thought I would highlight this, because it's obviously taking a lot of community involvement and learning, and, you know, all these students are having arts education through fun, and pre, pre-K through eighth grade students got to take part in this, and you can obviously see that there's a lot of students having fun there, so. Go to the next slide. Next, we've got Ms. Reynolds' class, who I believe is with us right now. They teamed up to create a cake representing the three layers of the skin, and this is just a little snapshot of what's going on in the classroom. And I thought it was just a memorable activity to represent, you know, body parts, especially, you know, for people to get these physical representations through cake, you know, it's something fun, and you can eat it at the end.[1258.12][1258.12][laughter] No problems there. So, next, we've got the Family Literacy Night at Westview Elementary, another thing that highlights community, community involvement and community outreach. Just getting the families involved in both reading and literacy, I think, is great, and obviously, you can see that they put a lot of work into the big top decorations, the circus decorations, and the food. They put a lot of work into it, and I thought it should be highlighted tonight. Next, I don't think I can summarize it up any better, but as we've heard tonight, we've had the David Crockett FFA here with us. They recently attended the 91st Tennessee FFA Convention. We have a second-ever state president, Taylor, and we had some students sign with the Herbert College of Agriculture, and obviously, they're doing great work, both in the community and in the school, so it's definitely worth a second mention tonight. Next, we've got the Daniel Bloom HOSA, another club activity going on. They recently went to a competition, and Grace Caldwell and Chance Bowman both placed for international HOSA competitions, so it's definitely worth a mention in Washington County. Then finally, we had our TSBA Student Congress on Policies of Education recently. We had four representatives, as we did last year, and they got to do the mock school board meeting and the issues from last year, or issues this year, so. Yeah.
That one king bell stood, right?[1367.12][1367.12][laughter] I always learn.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John.[1373.12][1373.12][applause]
UC Monday night, the top ten banquet, and then again, graduation, it's less than three days away. Just in the last few hours, we received from Garrison Appraisals, the appraisal report for the Boons Creek Middle School property. It's not in your drop box, but I do have a hard copy for each of them. So, this is what the professionals think that building and property is worth. The actual full report runs through over 70 pages, describing exactly how the appraisal went, but on the backside of this document is the actual monetary appraisal. Madam Chairperson, shall I read that into the record?
Please.
According to the appraiser, that property, as is, on 4352 North Rome Street, is worth $1,770,000. Madam Chairperson, that concludes the direct report for April 29th.
Moving on to the new school enrollment.
I'll just get that out, but in the last update, I sent you a note on, we have a pretty good idea of what the enrollment is going to be at the new school, about what we expected it to be. Kindergarten, of course, is still a moving target, but if it comes in like it has, we look for the enrollment to be about 700, that doesn't include pre-K. We'll need to have that conversation soon about pre-K, what you want to do there. And with that, on behalf of the staff, I recommend that the new Boons Creek Elementary School be placed on the same enrollment policy as the other schools. That's Policy 6.205, and what I'm asking is, is that you lift that closed enrollment status, so that we can start enrolling all of the students and the families that have asked to be enrolled at the new school. Yes?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd like to put that in the form of a motion. Thank you. Go ahead.
Discussion?
What would 90% of that number?
What would you know?
Are they, is it 1,100 that they?
First one, Wayne would be a better, we hear 1,100.
It is 1,100.
Okay.
We've got a long way to go.
900, 10?
990. 99%.
Yeah, so we're still just opening and rolling.
90%.
Yeah, we make them.
Let's see, the 90% of that would be 900.
It's already going up.
That's an estimate.
About an estimate.
Because kindergarten, you don't know until like, until later. But our parent's experience says we want to have about 70 kindergartners, maybe more. But we do know that we have a waiting list inside the county, and inside Johnson City, and outside of Orange County. Not a big list, and I can't give you numbers. Somebody can. And it's time to start letting those families know where their children are going to go to school. So, thank you that much.
And will we have a community involvement night towards July, when it get closer to time?
That is the principal's desire in plant, yes. Kind of waiting on Burwell Construction Company to say, "Here's your building." We really may win that. I did send you a save the date on a ribbon, may have changed that, because I think a couple of years out of pocket. We'll look at that. May, maybe June might be more appropriate, because paint starts drying.
Our school, when you say lift, lift the restriction.
Right now...
Our current schools that aren't overcrowded, we have, what, an 80% cap? Is that where we? 90%?
90%. I have to authorize every one.
So, 90%, the 990, I think Mr. Hale said would be the cap, where you would accept students into the new school, until it has to come to 11. Is that what I'm hearing? No, students within that district, the zone for that school, anybody can come, okay? People coming out of the district...
We don't run buses inside Johnson City.
No, we don't. So, if anybody's coming from Johnson City, they'll be providing their own transportation.
Correct.
But the way a lot of our schools are now, it's closed enrollment if it's at 90% or more.
Right.
Okay, so they've got to go through the contract process. But to lift this off the Boons Creek School simply means that they can come from outside of the district to that school by signing a contract and providing their own transportation. It's all neat. Just opens up the door. Boons Creek was closed, period, unless you lived inside the Boons Creek District. Now, we're just opening it up.
Just like every other school.
And it'll remain open until it hits that 90% passage, and then you reserve those other seats for new students.
Right.
New students coming in from that zone.
Steve Barnes, the director of Johnson City, I asked him if he was okay with him if we ran buses in Johnson City, he was not...
Hi, you need to let me in. Any more discussion? Ms. Dalgard?
Yes.
Mr. Flanger?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McFlay?
Yes.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Mandich?
Yes.
Mr. Heenan?
Yes.
Ms. Kipman? Yes. Request to address the board, the session.
Is it right on my name and address by now?
I'm going to read the statement. Individuals speaking to the board address remarks to the chairman and may direct questions to individual board members or speakers only upon the approval of the chairman. Each person speaking shall state his name, address, and subject of presentation. Remarks will be limited to five minutes unless time is extended by a majority vote of the board. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who...
if we ran buses in Johnson City, he was not.
Hi, you need to let me in.
Any more discussion? Ms. Dalgard?
Yes.
Mr. Flanger?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Yes.
Mr. Mandich?
Yes.
Mr. Heenan?
Yes.
No more comments.
Request to address the board, Ms. Sash.
Is it right on my name and address by now?
Let's go read the statement. Individuals speaking to the board address remarks to the chairman and may direct questions to individual board members or speakers only upon the approval of the chairman. Each person speaking shall state his name, address, and subject of presentation. Remarks will be limited to five minutes unless time is extended by a majority vote of the board. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who does not adhere to the above rules or choose to be abusive to an individual board member or the board as a whole. Members of the board and the director of schools may have privilege of asking questions to any person who addresses the board, and Jennifer will be our talkkeeper.
Okay. Carrie A. Stropp, twenty-one Mockingbird Court. So, the reason I'm speaking tonight is on T and Ready testing. I have a whole lot to cover in five minutes, so I'm gonna talk as fast as I can because I have a whole lot to say. So, there's four things I want to ask you guys to do. The first thing I want to ask you guys to do is consider changing the fall EOC test grades back without the EOC test, that I'm gonna explain more later, but that's the first thing I'm gonna ask you all to do. The second thing I want to ask you all to do is to cancel T and Ready testing for second graders. It is optional. Johnson City schools don't take it. I don't understand why we are taking it when it doesn't count for anything. The third thing I'm gonna ask you guys to do is to change the weighted amount to the lowest for all grade levels. Elementary zero percent, middle school is ten percent, high school is fifteen percent. The fourth thing I'm gonna ask you guys to do is to follow suit with a lot of the school boards in the state of Tennessee. They're really not happy with T and Ready testing. I've done a lot of research on it, and what they're doing is they're pretty much making resolutions and no confidence in the testing, and it's because they can't find, you know, the testing is not accurate. The standards, it doesn't match the standards. They can't get a test that works correctly. They don't even know if it's graded correctly, honestly. When you research it, I believe it has about a fifteen percent approval rating of it's actually what our kids are being taught. You know, they are working on finding a new vendor. If the state of Tennessee can find the vendor, get the test right, I absolutely agree that it should be counted at twenty-five percent. But until the state can come in and say, it's a correct test, and that teachers feel confident in giving it to their students, I think we should follow suit with all the other school boards and hold it to the lowest level. So, that's the four things. On the EOC testing, I sat through the October meeting, and when I was, when I saw the parents speaking, I remembered you guys voting on it. So I made a copy of the calendar, because those tests didn't have to count for those kids, because I called the state of Tennessee. For it to be required for Washington County to count those tests, the grades would have had to have been back five days before the nineteenth, so that would have actually been December twelfth. The grades came back, and you all decided to move the calendar. And I don't think anybody did this to just be malicious and let's count these test grades and let's hurt all these kids' grades. I don't think there was anything bad by it, I just don't think anybody understood what the unintended consequences were with the seventy-three students dropping a letter grade. So, I can't find any other school board that moved the calendar to count these tests. Now, if there is one, I've called a lot of school board members across the state. I'm a part of two or three different groups on social media that I've talked to a lot of people across the state. I can't find anybody else that moved the calendar to count these test grades. So, my whole concern is, are we comparing apples to apples when these kids are graduating? The seniors, and you have a senior who, we counted him at twenty-five percent, how is that fair to compare them to a Knoxville student who did not have this test count at all? And that's what I want you guys to consider in this. You're hurting these seniors. I don't know how many seniors it was, but these seniors, they're trying to get scholarships, and we're the only school that held them at twenty-five percent. We moved the calendar, and you're the only one that voted no to move the calendar. Everybody else did, but I don't think you all knew the consequence of what you were doing to these students. Well, now we know the consequence, so I'm asking you to consider changing that and making these kids on a level playing field for their grades. Second thing, T and Ready testing for second grade. Johnson City does not, they do not give or administer the second grade ES, or EOC. T and Ready testing, it's all the same, but I, I don't know, do we get a grant? Is that why we give the test to second graders? Because it's optional? Does anybody know? We do not. Okay, because, you know, if we know the test is failing, we don't have a vendor, you know, it, the test is just a mess, and I don't have to tell you all this, you know it's a mess too. I mean, I met with Micah Van Huss and Matthew Hill, they know it's a mess. The education committee's trying to fix it. Who knows if they're gonna fix it, but let's hope they fix it, because our, I mean, I believe in testing, if it's a true accurate representation of what our kids are doing. But second graders are stressed out. Talked to two teachers yesterday at the ball field, they had second graders throw in up over a test that doesn't count. It doesn't count for anything. It doesn't count for the teachers. It doesn't, all it does is give the state of Tennessee data. Okay, I'm off that soapbox. Third thing, changing to the lowest amounts. What it does is it shows Nashville that you all have no confidence in this test. The state, or Nashville's not gonna budge on trying to get this right. If the school boards don't band together and say, okay, we're not counting your test, we're gonna hold it to the lowest possible until you guys can get it right. We have to hold them accountable to get these test, these kids a test that is actually accurate. And if you have kids in the school system, you know it's not accurate. You know these kids are being tested on material that they are not able to cover or that the teachers don't even know is a standard. So, until the state gets a correct test that we all have confidence in, I'm asking that you guys change that. I have one more thing. Can I say it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion.
Second.
A second.
Take ten more times.
All in favor, say aye.
Okay.
All opposed.
Okay, so if you take a look at the second page, that's the date the EOC test came back. It came back on January fourth. That was the original date where report cards were supposed to come out, because if you have your school calendar on the front, report cards were originally supposed to go out January fourth. So I was just wanting you all to see proof that my data was accurate. The second thing is your policy on testing, and my printer, I've been traveling all week, y'all, I'm exhausted. My printer was eating all of my papers, and none of them looked pretty, and I apologize. But we're, this school board is holding third through twelfth grade at twenty-five percent. There's not another school system doing that that I can find in the state of Tennessee. Third graders are being held to twenty-five percent. That's your board policy, okay? I'm asking that you lower that. You know, elementary school can be held at zero percent, middle school can be held at ten percent, and high school can be held at fifteen percent. I'm just asking you guys to consider doing this until the state can get a test that is actually reliable and that we know is an accurate representation. I've talked to teachers, okay? Everybody's saying is, well, teachers are held accountable, we gotta hold the students accountable. Well, teachers want their kids to succeed, and with giving a test that is no one trusts, you're hindering your kids from succeeding. I encourage you all to ask the teachers what they feel. Ask them what they think, because they're telling me they don't agree with it being held at twenty-five percent. But you all can ask for your own. And then the last thing is an article on Memphis. Their school board just passed it. It's February twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen. This is one of the fifty school systems I was reading about who's just taken a stand against testing. Memphis, I mean, they quoted, we do not think there's a good rationale for increasing the weight of T and Ready assessments on students' grade beyond the minimum required by the state, especially considering recent testing challenges, the proposal reads. I mean, school boards are really trying to stand up and, and help these kids, and I think all of us together want to help these kids, but penalizing them for a test that we don't feel is valid is, is crazy. I had these to print off too, one more thing, and I promise I'm done. Testing refusals. I'm a part of two parent groups on Facebook, and they're, they go all over the state of Tennessee, and I am not advocating for this at all, so please do not think that I am. But there's this huge wave going of parents refusing testing, okay? And it hurts our school system if parents refuse it. So I just want you all to know, if parents start refusing it, it can hurt us bad. So I don't know if you all have heard about it, but Tennessee doesn't have an opt-out policy, but there's no policy stopping parents from refusing it. And there's a million of them online. I was gonna print them off, but only got one to print, because my printer was eating them, so just letting you all know. Yes, thank you.
I want to know, did Washington County not vote three or four years ago not to give standardized tests to kindergarten through the second?
That's one of my questions.
The minutes are as follows. On July, in July of two thousand fifteen, it says that Mr. Hammond made a motion to remove the SAT ten test for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year. Mrs. Buchanan seconded the motion. Mr. Gangler made a motion to table the matter. Mr. May seconded the motion. The motion failed on roll call vote. The original motion carried on roll call vote, which means for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year, the SAT ten test was removed. That is the only motion there that is in any minutes that we've.
It's because the testing name changed. They eliminated the SAT ten, but this came when T and Ready came, so the name is different.
But it still says fifteen sixteen.
Oh, it's because of the year.
It's because of the year.
Okay, so do I need to make a motion to just take that test off, and not put a school year?
Is this, is that test optional with the state?
It is.
Then why are we putting our second graders through that?
I make a motion that we remove that test for the second grade.
A second.
Discussion?
I'd like to hear why we are doing.
I got done with my questions, and I can sit down.
I mean, you know, everything's got a positive and a negative to it, so what's, you know, what are, what are the advantages and the reasons to do it, and, you know, and some reasons not to?
I can, I can answer that, bearing in mind I'm a high school educator, and, and I'm not sure what Johnson City is doing. I'm sure Mrs. Stropp is correct, but of the hundred and forty odd school systems in the state, I think a hundred and five do give the second grade T and Ready test.
Okay.
Because, for one thing, it gives the, the second graders a zero-pressure experience in testing. It gives their teachers a prescriptive score on how they're doing in the standards. It does help, it builds value-added scores for when those children enter the third grade. It is, it's prescriptive. It doesn't count for any grade whatsoever. It is optional. If this Board of Education votes to remove it, it will be done. None has been given yet this year. It'll start in days, it's a matter of days, but the boards will be done.
So we, we did the testing at the end of the year.
Well, high school testing is given on.
Well, not just the second grade.
The second grade is done during, during April and early.
We also do the star testing, though. I mean, we.
Other tests are done where they can get an assessment, not, just not a week-long standardized test.
A week-long standardized test.
And they, it is very scary and intimidating to a seven-year-old, having to sit for three or four hours at a time, taking this very stressful test.
It is a, it, you know, I put my children to bed on time, they get breakfast every morning, and when this week comes around, it is like they're on pins and needles.
It's the worst.
They are on pins and needles. They want to go to bed at seven o'clock. If you change that routine, that's just, that's bad, and, and they're, I mean, they throw up, they stress out.
A second grader on our ball field told me yesterday, he said, this is gonna go to college. I go to college, and I'm like, this is.
Madam Chairman, so, okay, and this is one of the issues that I, I have, I have a problem with our board. We're getting ready to test in the next several weeks. Why are we at the eleventh hour dealing with this? You know, why was this not dealt with at the beginning of the school system?
I didn't find out it was optional.
I didn't know either. I thought, I thought that, that we'd take care of that my first year on the board when we did that. I didn't know that we were still getting it.
Two years ago, I asked our former director if we were testing second grade, and she said it was mandatory. Went on the website, the Tennessee State website, and it said optional. That was a little late before I could do anything then.
We did vote to remove this two years, or three years ago, we discussed it, and I guess the wording and the phrase for that school year was misleading, and I'll take full responsibility for that, because I made the motion. So.
Well, here's, my, my, I mean, we're not the professional, okay? We're here to help set policy. So, Dr. Flannery, what is your recommendation?
The board?
No, I don't want if what.
Let me finish. If the board doesn't instruct me, otherwise that test will be given.
So you, okay.
Madam Chair, may I say one thing? I was just gonna say that I thought we removed the test from our schools. I didn't realize it had a one-year limitation in the motion.
Exactly.
I thought it was removed.
I just want to say one thing. I understand what you're saying, the parents are more of the stakeholder than anyone is, and we've got to take them into consideration, too. No one knows a child better than a parent, if they're doing their job right. So, it's no disrespect to anyone in education. At the end of the day, it's gotta be about the kids, and we are already monitoring them by their taking other tests, just not this particular one structured this particular way. So we do have a measure out there.
I have one. One, one other point. I remember that one of the reasons that I voted for it, voted to eliminate it, was because we were told that night that there was no other school system in upriver Tennessee that was using that test, because it was optional, that there were other tests that were doing the same thing, and that was just one more test that's crept the kids out. But when I found out there was no other system up here in our area using it, that's one of the reasons that I voted to eliminate that test.
You're thinking, okay. Do you want else?
John, what do you think?
I mean, I know, in my experience in the school system, the T and Ready test has always just been faulty. It's always just come up, I don't know, always just a little bit short for everyone that takes it, and all feel like, you know, I know the teachers stress out, the kids stress out. It certainly made me stressed whenever I was going through it, even in high school years, but, I mean, for the second grade level, I mean, yeah, if, we've already got other benchmarks for it, other benchmarks that we can use to do the prescriptive, I guess, testing range. I don't, I feel like it's unnecessary just to have them.
Dr. Flannery, do you think it's beneficial for our system to give it?
Yes, no. Stress on the children is considerable, and something to watch, you take into account. The prescriptive nature of the test is very useful for lower-grade teachers, and the ability to, the state has, using that test to build growth scores for third graders makes the evaluation system more credible. There's an upside to downside. I, I've never seen the test given, but I understand it's far, it's a lesser test than, say, what, sixth grade or the tenth grade, or the third grade or the tenth. Where is that? Where is the test anxiety thing?
Is there someone here that can walk me through the test day then?
What, what would you like?
Walk me through that test week for a second grader. A day, how many hours is it?
I can. The English Language Arts part will be on April the sixteenth. It's a one-subpart, it's anywhere from thirty to forty minutes. And then the.
That's, that's one day?
That's one day.
So for thirty, forty minutes, they take that, and they're done?
That's correct. The same thing, basically, we come back on Tuesday, April the twenty-third, and we take a subtest, and it's basically thirty to forty minutes. And then, basically, the same thing for the next, about four, five days. It's around thirty minutes. The, the intent of the test was rounded back into the research that came out in two thousand fifteen. It is why we have read to be ready. It's where, and you all have heard this before, Tennessee has approximately thirty to thirty-five percent of the students in the state of Tennessee reading on grade level at the end of third grade. So the state wanted some more accountability before children got to the third grade, so therefore they had the optional second grade test. And they also put in place the early learning model for pre-K and kindergarten, where the pre-K teachers and the kindergarten teachers are accountable for the student learning. Some school systems have the first grade also using the portfolio, so therefore you would have kindergarten first, or pre-K kindergarten first grade accountable, and in second grade accountable with the, basically, what's called the T and Ready test. The second graders take English Language Arts and math. When you get to third grade all the way through eighth grade, you are tested in all four content areas, if the state does not have an issue that year with some of the tests. Have there been issues with the test with basic materials? Sure.
So, but my point being, or not point, but understanding this is, for one day, the most of them will be tested for thirty, forty-five minutes?
You're correct. For how many days? Five in second grade. It's a little, as you get older, it, it's, the grade levels, it's a little longer, and we go, we go six days, I believe it is, in the seventh and eighth grade.
Is it not held against a child, Dr. Park? Dr. Guy, is it, I mean, does it held against the kids or follow the kids throughout? Is it weighted towards the teachers at any point during the?
In second grade?
Yes, ma'am.
No. It is simply a somewhat a transition to help the child be a little more familiar with the testing process before it hits the high accountability and the high stakes, starting in third grade.
In my opinion, and I'm, I'm gonna ask you this, why would we have, would it not be beneficial then to just pop the test in a day and, and hand it out, you know, at any you know, at any time, just to let the kids be familiar with the test and not? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is it's one test. Why in the world would we, you know what I'm saying? Is that, would that not be a benefit at all to just to pop test them?
Well, the test, this test that we're, the T and Ready test is provided by the state.
So we have to do it like...
We have to do it within the window that the state gives us.
Dr. Kite, what's the environment of the room? Is it a normal environment? Is it the same environment that those kids are coming into every single day?
You hope the teacher does that.
But there's also, there's also a proctor in the room, which is a stretch, or sometimes a stretch to these kids. Everything has to be taken off the wall so their classroom doesn't look like we say?
They've changed that. When it changed over in, in 15, 16, 17, in Wilfrum, like SAT 10 to T and Ready. Those types of things changed to some degree. I mean, do we still have security and the potential for a breach and those types of things? Yes. Is it still high stress for the teachers and so forth? Yes. But the state has given us some leeway on what has to be taken down on the walls and social...
But things do have to be taken off the walls. I mean, it's not their normal classroom.
If there is something on the wall that could benefit a child in answering the question...
So their word walls, those things, because those are normal, everyday things?
Multiplication tables have to come, if they have multiplication tables, those types of things.
What other test do our second graders take? How many tests are there altogether? And what are they?
There is a STAR test that is administered. We have what we call, every nine weeks, we have a common formative assessment that is grounded in the standards, which basically gives us better information because it's grounded in the standards. It's based on the standards, which is what the TCAP's like. The STAR is not exactly standards-based. But it is something that we do administer in second grade.
So the test every nine, nine?
Three, nine weeks. We have one every three, nine weeks.
Okay. The STAR test, the T and Ready test, and what else?
Well, teachers give their test that they would develop throughout the year weekly.
Any of those that are required or just what the teacher wants to do?
No, that's just what the teacher, what the teacher wants.
To expound on what Carrie said, our state legislators are getting bombarded with complaints about too much testing, especially at lower levels. And that's causing them to do rethinking. I know about the portfolio and things like that. They're wanting to do a little less of the stress that's involved in that, lower elementary. So that's something they've looked into. And people have, parents like Carrie have communicated with them. So that's something to think about too.
I guess the other element I'd like to understand is how much benefit we get from the assessments. What's, what's actually done to the second graders to change their next year? What, how do we use this, this information from this test to improve what we do for those students in the third grade?
Go ahead.
Yes.
I've got my answer.
The information comes back, the results come back to the teachers, the second grade teachers. They take it and they can make adjustments in the instructions, see how effective they appear to be based on the standards. Then the information goes to the third grade teacher where the student happens to be now. And the teacher uses that information, gives the principal some good information as well.
How quick does that information come back?
Well, it's been coming back, I can tell you it was in the fall. Now, we're being told that the test results will be coming back by the end of May to us to use for scores or grades. And then the test results will get back in June, July, like we get used to. But after the past two to three years, it's been in the fall before we received.
You said we give the STAR test, the STAR test, but it's not standards-based?
Not, no.
Why are we giving it?
For the RTI, we have to have... Mr. Hammond, is this what I gave your key for motion?
I could remember. Now, I make a motion that we do away with the, or eliminate altogether the, I don't wanna call it the T and Ready test.
Standardized test.
Is it T and Ready for second grade? Standardized T and Ready test for second grade level?
I just call it standardized because it might change next year.
But it does change name.
Dr. Harold?
I just want to say Mitch talked about the flip side of that. And while if we could do away with all testing, you wouldn't have an administrator or a teacher one complaining in this district. But that same stress is gonna be enhanced in third grade because these kids have no experience when it does count against our teachers and against our students and against our schools. So you need to take that into consideration. Because second grade is a, is a, is a stress-free test for the most part. We're, we're not stressing our kids over that. And if we have places where that's happening, then we need to talk to our teachers about that. Because that's a, that's a free test for us to gauge where our students are performing. And then we're gonna put them in third grade and they take a high-stakes test that does count with no exposure and no experience. Talk about nerves. It's gonna enhance those nerves in third grade. So do think about that flip side.
That's what, we got a lot of complaints from our third grade teachers because they would be coming in and totally responsible and had no idea where the students were before they got them in that third grade. And like I said, in Tennessee, we have anywhere from 30 to 35% of the students, that means 70, 65 to 70% of the students are not proficient. And the goal to the Read to Be Ready is by 2025, 75% of students in the state of Tennessee will be reading on grade level. If our students are not reading on grade level by the end of third grade, they have an extremely difficult time handling any of the other standards in science, social studies, math, so forth, because math turns over to the word problems. So...
So, so you're saying that none of these other tests help to identify the level that these second graders have achieved? I don't understand.
It's not as...
You, you said because of that one test, that they don't have any idea where these kids are on the learning level? That's what I understood you say.
No.
And there's all these other tests. Surely all these other tests give them some idea where these kids are? Um, you know, I understand both sides of this thing. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at it as a board member on this board. We are the best county school in this area. There's a reason. Others should be doing what we're doing. Why are we always trying to copy what somebody, their test scores are lower than ours? We're the best county school. We're doing something right. It may not always be popular, but if our test scores were at the bottom, then I could see us trying to reinvent the wheel. But, I mean, that's how I'm gonna look at it. We are the best county school around this area.
Oh, yeah, please, yeah.
I just wanna reiterate what Dr. Harold said, but also to answer your question, Mr. McLean, we get information from those other tests, but this is what we think about. We always think about the students first, but I think about our teachers too. Our teachers are held accountable to the T and Ready testing no matter what. And that test, that second grade test, gives us the closest aligned, most closely aligned information to that test. So that test gives us the best data to help support our teachers in knowing how we're doing as far as the alignment to the test. So that's the best way for us to support our teachers. And that's what they're held accountable for by the state. And that's where that data is.
So can we take that test and eliminate something else?
No, it all, here's one thing that we look at, I think all of us do. We don't look at just one number. We don't wanna give them multiple tests, but we also wanna look at various points so that we can't put all of our eggs in one basket, right? So the, we, we do as few as possible to get valid data. And I also wanna say this, being very familiar with what some of our other local school systems do, that test, we don't have to pay anything for that. If we take that away, some of the other school systems that don't use that test are paying a lot of money for some other really good tests. So if we take that away, then we're gonna have to look at a school system spending a lot of money to get something else that gives us those, that prescribed data. So I, I think that it's not, we don't wanna stress the students. We don't wanna stress the teachers. But that gives us something to really support our teachers, that data does.
Well, that's part of what I'm looking at is how much, how much do we really need to test those second graders?
Those tests we do throughout the year though, Mr. McLean, aren't multiple-day tests. They're 30 to 45-minute tests at one point. They're very short. They're, they're not lengthy tests by any means.
Well then, why are these kids getting so stressed out? And the parents getting upset because we're testing two months in their opinions? I think parents away from here talked to me about this.
I, I don't know. I don't, I've not had that complaint. So I don't know if it, I mean, we may need to look at where that's coming from and find out if we have any issues somewhere. I don't know.
Parents all over the state are complaining. So it's something that...
But they're also complaining in grades 3, 8, and that's not optional. So...
Mr. Hammond?
You know, I'm hearing a lot, I'm hearing two principals telling me state things. And Dr. Kite told us some good information, you told us some good information. And we're gonna test them here in three or four days. And I'm not sure it's the best thing, don't get me wrong. But I think until we, I think we need to have us somehow a little firmer meeting together with all our principals and, you know, some teacher. I mean, we got one Teacher of the Year I'm looking at right there. I mean, and another one. So, I mean, I think we're gonna make a decision up here that's gonna affect our whole system. I mean, and it may not be to take that test, may not be the best thing, but I'm gonna make a motion we table this until we get some more information and have a sit-down with some familiar faces to hear some more points. And I know it will, they'll still take it this year, and I hate that, but I think we've just about waved to the horse give out to...
I'll second that.
Again, if I may say it real quick, I thought we'd already voted on it three, four years ago.
Yeah.
You can't discuss... Both of them?
Mr. Hammond?
No.
Ms. Stellinger?
No.
Mr. Fleener?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
No.
Mr. Ganger? Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
No.
Four names.
Further discussion on the original motion?
Further discussion on the original motion.
Okay. I'd like to make a comment. It's not gonna be very popular. We've been talking about this test in three months now. We've done nothing. Not saying we should have, not saying we shouldn't have. But we've done anything, and now we're gonna test next week, and we're gonna do something about it. I'm not sure that we're making the best decision in that. Either way, I don't think win or lose, this is, I don't think we've thought this out very hard to at least get some ideas from other principals and nothing, no offense to two that talk to me, but they're the pulse of their schools. And there's other principals here, and if they wanna speak, I hope we'll hear them. But they're the pulse of our schools, but they're not the only voice in our schools. I just, that's my two cents.
Madam Chair, I understand what you're saying, Chad, and I respect our principals and our administrators. But again, parents are stakeholders, and parents know their children better than anybody else. It's a statewide conversation right now, has been for three years. State can't get it right. Name keeps changing on the test. Data keeps changing. Everything keeps changing. But one thing that doesn't change is that we're stifling most of our children anyway, their creativity, by a thing called testing. We, we do have to have a gauge, we do have to have a mark, we do have to have a measure. No doubt about it. And our system's doing great, but their system's doing just as well as us that aren't doing it. I mean, so, and that's evident even with the state websites. But the thing is, there, there's gotta be somewhere where we draw the line. And maybe doing what to start this, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just saying that I thought this was a dead issue. But again, I take full responsibility because evidently on my motion, I must have attacked that particular school year. So I apologize to the parents, children, and even the teachers because I've had teachers tell me they supported it when we made that motion and took that vote. That's all I've got to say.
I have a procedural question, Madam Chair. Dr. Parliament, Carrie, right?
Yes, there, yes.
And to pass, to pass the motion would require how many yes votes?
State law provides that a majority is the majority of the membership, not the quorum. So it takes five votes, five yes votes to pass this motion by law. So I won't be along with you. That's all we...
Mr. Fleener?
Repeat the motion, please, to, to do away with the Tennessee Ready Test. No.
For the second grade?
No, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
No.
Mr. Meredith?
No.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Stellinger?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
I do hope we'll talk about this again, but I...
That's why table is, to make it come back.
I mean, I'm responsible, but not what happened back then. But I, I'm not holding you accountable for that.
We're gonna take the five-minute recess.
Agreed. Agreed.
For the grades fans, if you need to have all the information in front of you, in time to think about it, I'll get it for you before the meeting.
Okay.
And again, I am comfortable, I don't, I can't tell you that I'm comfortable with zero percent.
I have to say.
Because I think the kids have to have some skin in the game to use that uniform. But twenty-five, if you come up twenty-five percent, I'll be good with that.
Possibly ten and maybe fifteen.
And I'll tell you why, too. I took the time to talk to a lot of teachers in Washington County schools about do you think they need to have that much percentage, and a lot of them said, no. It's not that important, people, they're not. So their opinion has changed my opinion.
Good. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Following up on that then, help me to understand, other than the fact, other than we did it one way in the fall, so that's the, that's the reason we have to do it that way in the spring. I mean, I, I'm not sure, I don't really understand the connect there.
No, I have to.
Other than you've got a certain, kids that got grades a certain way in the fall, okay. Well, now they're going to get them a different, you know, a slightly different way in the spring. I mean, what's the major snafu there?
Nothing to stop you from changing, it's just a matter of being.
I'd like to give a mention, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, I think it's just a matter of being consistent, fair and even this school year.
Yeah, well, I don't want to have it.
I'd like to make it the same uniform all school year, too. I think that kind of lets students and parents know what to expect. But I would like to give them at least, like I said, a month or two to know what going in. So if you could get that for us, I think will be.
Dr. Kite and Dr. Keys are both already researching, and we'll get a distillation of the rules to you and frankly, a form that any of us can understand, because it's a little bit missing there.
And I'd like to ask Dr. Kite or yourself to charge the principals to, to come up with, you know, their under, you know, their second grade, their principals. I'd like to, because I know we have some principals that aren't as outspoken and want to come up and say things on, you know, out in front of everybody, but their opinion shouldn't be weighted less just because somebody else is willing to stand up and say one thing. So I'd like for one of yous to find that out and send it to us in the, in the weekly update here in the next couple of weeks, if that's too much to ask.
Their opinions on?
There, no, I want the Tennessee ready. What, what are they, you know, just, we had two tonight, spoke up and said they liked it because it, you know, does, does what they want it to, you know?
I'll do that myself. I'll have them give me, just give me a couple of paragraphs, your opinion on second grade testing. And bear in mind that this will become a public record.
But I don't, I mean, just leave our names off of it. It's just something that would be valuable.
These are professional administrators, they'll put their name on it and they'll stand behind it.
And wouldn't it be nice to hear from teachers, too?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking them, but they know the pulse of their schools. And it should go to them to come, you know what I'm saying? Or if they want to stand up, you know, and they want to address the board or whatever, if they don't feel comfortable talking to their principals, somehow, I'd like to get more than just a, a few ideas of what they want, because, I mean, we're going to make the decision to change whatever, you know, for everybody.
I know.
So I want to make sure we're not, yeah.
We'll have a couple of weeks.
Yeah, if you don't care, I mean.
The, um, the percentage wise, it was to be added to our next policy review.
Is that chapter five?
No, it was on the list of table policies that we were going to read.
Oh, okay, thank you. So take some time to know your end of April.
Thank you.
All right, in the student case three point eighteen, point nineteen, point one, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion, we stick with the disciplinary board's action on case number one, please.
I see.
You say wrong problems?
Oh, yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Due to conflict of interest, I pass. In the student case three point eighteen, point nineteen, point two, what is the board's pleasure?
All right, GM, I'd like to make a motion that we stick with the disciplinary action committees' recommendation.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Buchanan?
Yes. Committee reports, bid review.
Bid review. You met on Tuesday after the school tour, so I would send you ready in your drop box. So I will give you just a moment to get the copy coming on, on its way to you. Does anybody got a copy?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chairman, I recommend approval of the report.
Second.
All in favor to accept the report, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, strike a one.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Bid, review, bid committee met and reviewed the bids that came in for the janitorial services, as you can see on page two of what I passed out to you. This is a bid for the next four years. If you have any specific questions, I'm sure that Dr. Karenin or Mr. Patrick can answer your questions. I move for approval of Premier Services Knoxville, Tennessee. That's the low bid.
Second.
Any discussion?
And that doesn't change for any reason, right?
No. Uh, what are the dates of the beginning of this bid and the ending, please? Since I didn't see the actual bid document.
How do you guys see?
It's on the front page.
Huh? Actually, all we have is the bid evaluation sheet in front of me, but it's the, uh.
Does it begin June one?
It begins June one this year.
June one this year, forty-eight months.
Ends May thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Is that correct? Come on, do your math.
I can go get the document.
You're going to have to go get the document, please.
Is there, is there any exceptions in their bid document?
None of theirs.
That they'll be asking for any kind of annual reviews or increases, or it's a straight?
That was built in the bid document. Everybody had a chance, opportunity to, uh, put down what they would charge for years one, two, three, or four.
Okay.
And there is a lovely, it looks like a twenty-five hundred dollar increase for the sec, for the third and fourth years.
Okay.
And that was on one particular school.
So that's already in this total?
Yes, sir.
Total bid amount. That's all the questions I'd have, Madam Chairman.
I do have one question. Surely, we don't, it's, we're going to pay them a portion over four years, correct?
Sir.
We pay them a portion over those four years, correct?
Yes, we, we pay a monthly invoice. And, and of course, this is a, uh, we can, we can be released from this after giving a cause, a cure date, so forth, and of course, any contract that this board enters into will be looked at by your attorney before it's signed.
It's eight hundred and some thousand a year. Paid on, paid on a monthly billing cycle.
Did this break it down school by school as well?
Yes, sir.
I mean, because I've gotten, heard complaints lately that we're not having the amount of people that should be at the school, uh, that should be cleaning at night.
Right.
Have you heard that?
We have had the cases of that, and we, uh, we address those as they come in and.
Well, I just remember that man, when he came, and he said, you know, if you have any problems like that, you let me know.
Right.
Have we let them know?
Yes, we have, and, yes.
I've heard problems like that, too, as well.
I mean, I, I don't know how long we've had it now, two, three years, whatever, and I've heard no complaints up till here recently.
Right.
I mean, I'm not complaining about the job they've done. Only two complaints I've had is that, people not being staffed, or schools not being staffed, putting an extra workload on the ones that are there.
Yes.
And that their pay is not, and I know we have nothing to do with their pay. And I've tried to explain that to some of them that've talked to me. But they have not been getting, uh, raises or anything. And I worry about that, on a four-year thing, if they're going to be at the pay rate they are now and in four years, with them not going up over that time, I'm afraid they're not going to get raises either. I know it's out of our control, but, uh, that's been a complaint I've had.
Well, I can, I've got a breakdown of each one, if you'd like to chop you up.
Mr. Ganger, the, um, the man from Premier is here, if you'd like to have him up, is it okay?
If the board would like to hear about what I just mentioned, I mean, it's bound to me.
We all do. My name is Sri Sami, I'm the recent manager of his premier. And I heard your concern about shortness and, and stuff like that. We have a run, we have our ad running all the time in all the newspapers.
Sure.
The only problem we have is really, is the restriction y'all have to put the people in. We put some people and we get rejected for parking ticket. I mean, everybody got a parking ticket, I mean, and you can review that, I mean, with the.
You do a background check and they get refused because of a parking ticket?
Parking ticket. I mean, and I have the contractor manager issues with me in here. That is the only reason, I mean, we have a, we have an ad running all the time, local newspaper, and Indeed, I mean, all the stuff. We love to have staff, because, I mean, our people working hard.
Sure.
And I mentioned, and you mentioned something about people that not get a raise, or people that not get anything. We started in two thousand and sixteen with Washington County, or we partner with you all. When Christmas time come, I mean, we give the people Christmas bonus, and we never ask Washington County for an increase. We give them raises, I mean, since we start, and we never ask any increase from Washington County. So we looking, we looking after the people, because we love to go ahead and, and help the community. But we, I mean, we only have our hand tied for what we got.
Sure.
But part of the, showing some of the schools, I mean, this part from January into April, actually, when the, when people get their tax money back, all right, there's nothing here in all the schools we got. I mean, we have like a drop a little bit, and I think now, start coming all the way back up to get staffed. But the only issue really, I mean, and I, and I hope y'all can help us out with the background. I mean, I understand if somebody got felony, somebody got a misdemeanor or something, but parking ticket, I mean, for stopping the guy from getting the job, expired driving license or expired ID to get them from getting the job, I mean, that.
Do we have?
I mean, I don't know, I mean.
Who, who hires, who hires, but we hire teachers for parking tickets?
Yes, sir, but I mean, I mean, teachers, I mean, they're, all right. We dealing like with some certain level of society in here. I mean, a teacher is not like a janitor.
Okay.
All right, I mean, and not everybody in this county looking to be a janitor, to be honest with you. So, I mean, we try to help them out by like, I mean, if you stay with us like for sixty days, we'll give you like fifty dollars bonus, just to being in, all right? I mean, we, we raise our wage up, just to help the people and attracting in. But the regulation with, uh, with the criminal record, I mean, that's what really put us behind big time. Like, I mean, I, I mean, can you, I mean, I got a parking ticket before, I mean, I got, I got a citation before by parking like side of the road, I mean, if you have something like that, be rejected. We turn eleven people and we get you.
You're saying we as a school system are rejected?
Yes, sir.
We don't control them.
Well, I mean, I mean, the human resources, I'm sorry, sir.
I'd like to ask Dr. Karenin or Philip, whoever's run, managing the contract. Okay, does our contract have anything in it about background checks and what led?
It has that we, we conduct all background checks. To my knowledge, there's never been a person turned down for a parking ticket.
What, what, okay, they're not our employees, who, let me rephrase that, then. Who does the background check for premier employees? We do.
Air Department.
And that's mandated by state law. Any contractor comes on school grounds has to be, has to pass a universal background check.
Okay, so to answer Mr. Ganger's question, we are the ones doing the background checks?
Absolutely.
For their employees.
Does it come back to you showing why this person can't be?
They just come back to us and we review them and either approve or non-approve.
But it doesn't show?
If there's any question, if it's to the seriousness of the question, I talk to Dr. Flannery, but.
So you actually see and say, oh, okay, I have one done, I got a parking ticket. It comes to you, you see that? So I don't.
That's not a, that's not a denial.
I mean, the feedback, we get, the feedback.
Was it the employee that gave you the feedback?
No, ma'am. Our, our contractor manager, she contacted Lady Heather, and she got updates. Because, I mean, actually, I mean, what I start doing when I'm seeing this turnover a lot, I told her every time you copy and copying Ms. Heather and Ms. Michelle, I want a copy and copy to me. So I can follow up for how many people we represent to you all and how many money.
And we have a work with you there, I mean, that's happened, we definitely want to help.
I mean, I love to, I mean, don't even think, I mean, we, we short the school because we'd like to make money. All right, because our staff and our management, they working hard every night. So your school gonna get cleaned in the morning, and we're not gonna miss any school. And since we've been there here for almost two years and a half, we never missed one, one school for being cleaned. I mean, we doing the best we can every night. I mean, there's our contractor manager, Linda Hudg, I mean, she lives home, she lives like a forty-five minutes, hour from here, and she go home like two o'clock in the morning. I mean, I feel bad for her, to be honest with you, but that's what we got to meet your expectation and have a clean school in the morning.
Right, don't get me wrong.
So I mean, I don't want you to think like, I mean, because some people think like we short the people because we want to make money, that's not our intention. Premier, look after our people so much.
Don't get me wrong, now, I mean, I'm.
Yes, sir, I mean, I.
This is the best cleaning service since I've been on the board, as far as complaints coming back in, because I don't get them. So they're doing their job. It's, uh, you know, that was just the only complaint I got here recently was that. But let me ask you this, if I, if I started with you today, and in four years when this contract is up, will I be making more money?
Yes, sir, but the problem, we do not have anybody less than a couple of months. I mean, I'm telling you, I mean, the labor here in Washington County is very tough. All right, and I know Ms. Michelle, I mean, she's our customer, too. I mean, she's having a problem, too, because she called us for covering some subs in the morning and stuff like that, so it's all over. But if you work with us, all right, and do not miss a days for sixty days, I mean, we give you some incentive, like a bonus.
Okay.
All right, I mean, if you stay with us for a long time, I mean, we love to give them bonus. I mean, last year, I mean, we give all the supervisors, because the supervisors, they're the ones start from us from day one until actually the end of two thousand and eighteen. We give all of them raises. I mean, but the people that stayed with us, all right, through the time, I mean, we passed them raises. But the problem, they never last four, five months, and I don't know why, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
I mean, so, I mean, it's not like, I mean, I'm getting defensive about the subject, but I want to put some facts.
Yeah, absolutely.
So y'all know that. I mean, so, any, any question about cleaning, I mean, I'll, I'll love to answer, I mean, because we take like Washington County like our partners. I mean, I mean, we've been here for two years and a half, and I mean, actually, I mean, if you look at our price, I mean, we really got some little cut, we, we tried to pass you all some of our savings, because our equipment kind of depreciate out. So instead of being greedy, I mean, our president and our vice president, I mean, they said, no, we need to give them some little bit back to show them how much we appreciate y'all business, so.
One more question. Uh, I'm assuming that the four-year contract eliminates the Boots Creek Middle and Elementary School and adds the new K O.
That's correct.
In terms of the square footage.
That's correct.
Who's going to clean those two schools while they're still gone?
We're, we're making provisions for that in the budget right now, as far as, there won't be a lot of cleaning.
Right.
Very little grass mowing.
Right.
But we will have to keep them hot, warm, cool, and check them periodically. And if the board so chooses, I'd be glad to rebid this cleaning service contract.
I don't think that's necessary.
This was the only three bids you got back in.
Yes, sir.
Can we send invitations to, uh, Phil? To Phil, Mr.?
I've had a call for the question.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dillinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flanner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Thanks, I just thank you for being here.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, too.
Doctor Wicks, the bid committee report, Madam Chairman.
That moves us to district evaluation committee, do I need to read the report?
Ma'am?
Do I need to read the board? All right, then I move for approval of the report.
Give a second.
A second, any discussion?
Just a few minutes, right here.
Okay.
I started reading this, I didn't mean it.
All in favor of the report, say aye. Any opposed? So Ms. Dillinger made to use the proposed surveys for teachers to complete, um, on the principals, assistant principals, central office, elementary and secondary supervisor, and the list, um, and the miscellaneous surveys of meeting number five on the central office, elementary and secondary supervisor survey to include the section comments in the miscellaneous survey, as well as the original surveys on the principals and the assistant principals in the school year and merge the surveys for the next year, and I put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So you're tying this all into central office staff, principals, assistant principals, and the end of them?
Um, do you have those? They're in the drop box.
Well, I, that's okay. But I mean, your motion is.
Yes.
To make it one. I'm all for evaluating everyone. I don't have a problem with that. But I would like to see us extend this maybe to the twenty-third meeting on the administration, on the administrators, for some questions to be asked. I think, uh, that group needs to come to the table, too. I think we need to, because there's been some concerns expressed. And I don't think we've ever done an evaluation on central office staff. And again, I'm all for evaluations, and I know they are, too. But I would just like to see us kind of revise that, look at that, and maybe look at different avenues, since this is our first time doing that. And, and I appreciate all the work, don't get me wrong, but just see what's, what's available and have all stakeholders have a say in it, if possible.
Is there a motion to move it to? Twenty-third. I agree with that, there have been some things come up, and I think that would be a good.
So you say? Oh, I already have a motion, sorry.
You withdraw it.
Well, he didn't make, yeah, the motion's coming out of the committee.
Okay, well, I was going to make an emotion either to admit, admit, or, yes, that, or, if you all want to withdraw your motion and look at it as a whole.
Well, I'd like to have some discussion before we do anything, I think, just about this in general.
Oh, that's fine, I was just saying what I said.
I don't want to see anybody to.
I won't do anything, yeah.
Yeah, because, uh, I mean, I'm going to go ahead and say this, we have no business doing this, period. Uh, this is not a district evaluation. This is the director's job to evaluate central office staff, principals, teachers. There's a chain of command that goes through this, and it does not involve us. A district evaluation is for us at budget time, when it comes to make sure we're fully staffed, that we need somebody at central office, extra principal, extra assistant principal, those kind of things. It is not to sit here and dissect the director, that is our employee, the one, to dissect and pick at his staff and his employees. That, this is not a district evaluation at all. This is going above and beyond what we were supposed to be doing as a board, period. That's all I got.
I'd like to ask Dr. Flannery, what, what are your thoughts on this? When you look at this, knowing that, you know, that, that you're our employee, and everybody, and you're the face of the school system, and everybody below you is, you know, you stack those blocks, per se. What's your thoughts on this?
Immediately, I have a question that comes to mind. I spoke last night, uh, direct, our chairman, Irvin, asked that I call Attorney Bennett and ask him about this. They had spoken, and I did. And we talked last night, and the attorney asked me to ask this question. Let's say we use the, um, this one, the central office elementary supervisor. This is one that I believe is, is part of the report.
Yes, sir.
And let's say this one is put into use as is, and let's say all this data comes back to me, what exactly is it I'm supposed to do with this staff?
If you're asking me, throw it away.
I, I have a question, what, since you're, it kind of ties into what you're saying. Who will evaluate the elementary? Will it be the elementary teachers, or will they go to?
As it, it just says.
High school teachers, too, or?
No.
It says, it just says teacher survey, so I'm not, I, I would assume it would be the principals, teachers on that, I would assume. Or no, 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 on the supervisor, it would be, uh, elementary supervisor. I would guess all four hundred and fifty elementary teachers, most of which never come in contact with that supervisor during the course of school year.
Yeah, I, I, I won't make a motion, but I'd kind of like for us to sit back.
I'd like to get with them, too.
And push this back and review it, see what the goal is, and, and see what.
There are some questions on here that I think, um, I think that even address our budget. One of the things that I've been concerned about, we've had, um, a request for eleven instructional coaches. Eleven. Uh, I've never been to a, um, presentation from Mr. Meredith, that he hasn't reminded us how our enrollment is dropping. And, but one of the main things about that is that it helps teachers. Well, I'd like to know, does it help teachers? I'd like to know, I'd like to evaluate them. I mean, how else are we going to find out these things?
But it's not actually action, act, I see what you're saying, but we're not asking anybody what, how they feel like that their instructional coaches doing, you know what I'm saying?
Well, yes, there, did you read the last page?
Yeah, but it says my supervisor maintains an effect, or, no, no, no.
No, the last, it's on miscellaneous. Miscellaneous, the last page.
My instructional coaches strengthen my ability to receive.
Right.
Supporting my class.
If I'm going to justify probably half a million in salary, I want to know, are we using, you know, if we're claiming that teachers are wanting to use these, I want to know. And I feel like as a board member and a steward of taxpayers' money, I have a right to know.
You absolutely do. I mean, it's called going through the director and having the director get the feedback, and he does an evaluation, he does that.
Well, I'd like to see that.
Sit down with him.
I'd like to see that instrument, then, if he's got one that he's evaluating. Teachers.
We use the standard team evaluation form, the support form that's provided by the state.
Well, I still agree with, uh, Mr. Hammond, I think we need to have another, have everybody there, and I think we need to look at evaluation.
Have the industrial, or, uh, instructional coaches been evaluated before? I mean, you, you wanted to add that, the central office staff, to this evaluation, and the teachers are going to evaluate.
Right, I want to know, is it worth spending half a million?
I understand that, I, I just think that we need, I mean, I, again, I, I think everyone's to be evaluated as management goes, I'd just like to push this back and review it.
Well, I'm willing to do that.
Yeah, I think some, I mean, I don't like everything Dr. Flannery does, but it's Dr. Flannery's.
Dr. Flannery's job, you know what I'm saying? I, and I, there's some things I would, if I was sitting in his seat, I'd tweak, you know, some things, but ultimately, he sees, you know, he, it pretty much comes down to we have faith in what he's doing, you know what I'm saying? It's, and, you know, the instructional coaches or whatever he comes up with that we wanna do, we wanna give him all the tools we can to succeed. And he's got to face these teachers and, you know, our, our principals and everything, you know, all the way up to Dr. Kite and, and Dr. Kiernan and Dr. Keys and everybody to get their personal opinion, but it's a team effort. And, you know, we had those three teachers that won Teachers of the Year this year, and there's six hundred, six teachers on staff. I mean, we have some incredible people, I mean, and the, and nobody's saying we're not, and I understand that, but that's what makes Washington County special. I mean, you know, we got a lot of people who probably aren't happy with their job, I mean, I tell my kids all the time, get you a job that you really love, because when you have to work it seventy-five years, you'll, you know, it's not going to work you're enjoying. And we have some, I mean, those three teachers tonight, I don't know but one of them personally, as far as seeing what she's done, but she turned my daughter around. I mean, I seen the success story of something she's done. And, and I don't know that Dr. Flannery done anything in particular to make it happen, but he, she works for him. She makes him look wonderful, she makes Dr. Kite look wonderful, you know? And when we have a bad apple, they make y'all look terrible. But you're the face, you have to be the leader of this boat. And I'm just not so sure a subject of, of, a feel-good question is the right way. There's probably something we can do different, but-
Well, I'm willing, but I do want to get information from teachers. They're the backbone of our school system, I wanna know, like I said, this affects our budget. I'm not willing to make, uh, decisions like this unless I find out if this is what's happening. And I wanna know, and I feel like as a board member, I have that right to know.
And I'm not disagreeing with anybody.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm willing to-
I'm on a level playing, I don't wanna evaluate just for the sake of evaluating, and I want, I just want some more time to, for everybody to look at it.
Oh, I do, too. Well, I'm willing to come back to the table and let people voice their opinion and let us decide.
Are you in any motion?
I, I would just maybe ask, maybe I don't have this right, and maybe I'm overstepping my bounds, maybe you two just withdraw the motion, bring it back.
I don't think I, can I pin up? I can't pin up a meeting?
Came from committee, that's not on it. Committee thought it was a good idea. We need that, uh- There's a reason, y'all, there's reason, ain't gonna get both of them.
You'll need to get the, it's, it's, it's really, uh, once it gets seconded, you go off to the group, and you're really not supposed to call a motion, you're supposed to, uh, somebody needs to, you can say, without exception, I would like to withdraw my motion, as long as you have permission, of course, and such. That's, that's okay. I'm just supposed to take a motion, withdraw a motion.
Can you, if it's in the committee minutes, though, and we've already approved the minutes?
Sure. Yeah, the, the approval and, and the motion are two stand alone.
I would, I'm willing to try to work on it, I'd like to work on it that day before everybody, and that policy maybe-
I'll remove my-
Not policy, I'm sorry.
If you were to second, or, Mr.-
I like this. I think we need, all need people at the table.
Put it on something else. Put it on that, the, what, the May, the, April twenty-third?
April twenty-third, yes.
Okay, facilities.
Well, what did we just do, then? We just ignored the committee?
She, she removed hers, and I removed mine with exception?
We're gonna have another meeting and let more people speak, let people go.
That's what I asked Dr. Flannery, if it could be removed, and I can remove it with exception, so-
You did, you did accept the committee's report, correct?
We did.
And there was no subsequent motion?
That's right.
No action taken, or whatever.
So no action was taken. Facilities?
Facilities met March twenty-sixth, uh, should've been in your drop box, hopefully you've had time to read it, so therefore I move for approval of the report.
Second.
I forgot that I was still taking, sorry about that.
Ding, 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 ding.
Good light.
Yeah, I just, those run out. Alright, I have a, um, I have a motion in a second. All in favor of the report say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Ganger?
The motion, I mean, the committee recommends moving forward with a proposal to release bids for the agricultural shed at David Crockett, uh, turn into an indoor athletic training facility, move for approval of that.
Second. Discussion? No discussion?
Something I'll talk about, Dr. E.
Just asking for discussion.
No call, but please?
Yes.
Ms. Allenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Uh.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Meredith?
Okay, uh, the committee recommends, uh, approval for ESG to begin the engineering process for a new boiler at David Crockett High School. Second.
And motions, Mr. Flannery? And a motion and second discussion?
I was under the impression, and I guess we're diving into it deeper, but I was under the impression they were gonna look at all, at the boilers at David Crockett and Daniel Bebough, and come back with a cost savings, whether or not it'd be beneficial, why are we doing this as far as going in a little bit deeper dive? Yeah, go ahead.
ESG is already in the process of engineering their, uh, performance contract.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, there is a meeting scheduled for a preliminary fifty percent, uh, scope of work. But the, uh, boiler at David Crockett is no longer in service, and will not come back in service this fall, so I ask that ESG put that on the front of their list, so that we can get that engineered and get started on that work, pending what they come up with. Uh, we still have time to do that, so, uh, and, in letting ESG do it, it will allow us to put that under the performance contract, that we hope the county commission approves, that you all have already approved for them to proceed with. So if the county commission will approve it, then we'll have this much of that engineering at a hundred percent, and can move on letting them put that out for bid and get that process started. It, it was just a time saver.
So, is this free engineering services?
Yes, because they waived their sixty-five thousand dollars, y'all remember, uh, their sixty-five thousand dollar fee, if the school board did not approve that.
So rather than having a mechanical, a mechanical come in and do the engineering, or, or Mr. Street, then they'll, they'll do the engineering, uh, I guess you're gonna go back maybe with multiple boilers?
They'll have, you know, they have engineers on staff that can do this scope of work, and, yes, my, other, I directed them to come back with multiple boilers, smaller boilers, so that we'd have some redundancy in case one boiler went out, we would possibly have two to still keep the building warm.
And, and do you anticipate then, uh, you said something about putting this out for bid, so I'm assuming we'd get the boilers in place before the next heat season rolls around?
Yes, but-
It would be funded either from the school's funds or from the county's capital project fund?
Yes, sir.
No more discussion? Go call back for?
Ms. Allenworth?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
I got, uh, one thing I'm gonna bring up, it was the Gray Elementary Gymnasium, uh, I'd made a suggestion through the committee that, that we put that on the five-year capital plan. Is that something that just needs to be discussed, as far as putting on a, a year thing, or do I need to make a motion that we do that, put it on there? Or is that something, maybe we do it, uh, retreat, or something like that, if we go over there?
The capital plan, it's kind of, uh, been pushed aside for a few months by, it's officially in front of H E W, and they've not done anything with, uh, I think the roof on Jonesburg kinda put the kibosh on that, and that's a done deal, that's fine. So, I, next time H E W meets, I wanna take it back to them, so if you'd like to put that as part of the five-year plan, reorganization of it, anytime is appropriate, because I gotta get back in front of my most buses of technology and some other maintenance needs needs to be done, so I don't think I'd wait.
Well, then I'd make a motion that we add Gray Elementary Gymnasium to our five-year capital plan, uh, for new bleachers and the new gym floor.
To the tail end of it, or where in that process? You've got it prioritized.
Well, the only thing here is, it's a safety issue with them bleachers. I don't know if you all have seen them, but, uh, you know, there's no, there's no rails on the sides, no rails going up to help somebody walking up, so you can fall off the side, you can fall, not have a handle, go up and down, uh, they're hard to get in and out for the staff. You know, I'm not saying it has to be done now, but it's something we need to be looking at.
If I may, I've got the plan, as you approved it in front of me, uh, for nineteen-twenty, you've got about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of school buses, six hundred and forty thousand in technology, uh, you've got door hardware and frames at Paul Branch at a hundred and five thousand, door hardware and frames at Sulphur Springs at a hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, a roof at Boone at a million and eight, and, uh, HPAC controls, now that's gonna be ultimately limited into ESG's and H E C point two there. So maybe that'll be part of it.
Well, Madam Chair, you can, sorry, sorry.
Madam Chair, go ahead.
I was just wondering if we could throw this maybe at ESG to see how much it is and have that in front of us?
ESG is really an energy performance.
I know, but when we were down there at, at T S B A at the ball convention, you know, they said that you, you spent the money, your savings, on, you know, projects to fix things, but you also could fix your wind address and your new curtains, you know what I'm saying?
We, we can, in some, in some situations, we might possibly do that, but it's a little early in our evaluation with ESG right now.
Well, can we see how much, how could we get us a quote on new bleachers?
Well, I can, I can have, I can have, I can get you a budget number on replacement, bleachers on a replacement floor.
Thanks, sir.
And that might help you better decide where to put it in your five-year plan.
Well, I mean, I ain't trying to step on-
No, that's maybe the route we need to take.
Right, that's what I was gonna ask Jeff, to give a price, and, but still, I didn't know, if y'all are willing to entertain a motion to wait, or go ahead and put it on our five-year plan, or wait till we get the quote and then put it on the five-year plan?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I, that's fine with me, I mean-
Cause it is a safety issue, for sure.
You could put it on-
He might. I, you think about it.
Motion.
I thought he did, because I asked for a second.
I don't think we ever got a second, I didn't think we did.
Yeah.
He did, I did, that's why I-
I was waiting on Richard, tell me. Hello?
That was a lamp.
Sorry.
Well, quick, uh, so, Mr. Ganger, go ahead. So it sounds to me like this is a safety issue, and so we have a five-year plan, it's where we're prioritizing our needs, so, yeah, I think the question was, again, one, what's it cost, and then is it a higher need than new doors and hardware in a facility, or something else? So, and I think that's what'll drive us to where we put it in our particular unit.
At least it gives us an idea of worth.
Correct, so, yeah, if we could get a, a, a number, and then I think, you know, listening to Mr. Patrick, as to what he thinks is the most, uh, you know, facilities critical items, and then we weigh the, the safety issues with it, and then place it in there.
And they, you know, Gray's not the only one that seriously needs bleachers, so that would be a good-
I think these are probably the oldest and, uh, maybe the un- sanctus.
I totally agree with bleachers. I took some pictures and showed them to Dr. Flannery, three months ago, maybe, something like that. There's also, I think, a water issue of some kind in that particular structure, it may be coming from underneath, the way that bank is behind, but we've got another issue coming up, I think, that we're gonna have at Westview, that there's gonna have to be some determination as to a cost on that issue in the very near future, so perhaps we need to get prices on a whole bunch of this stuff, and have a workshop, and reorganize that, uh, immediate needs plan, I'll call it. Like, it's a moving target.
It is.
It's a, it's a moving target, and when an emergency happens, it gets moved again. So, can we proceed and get prices on these things, and?
We have a, I have a motion, a second, I'll tell.
Well, I think we can, we can add it to the-
Add to the five-year plan?
Yeah, and we can always move it once we get prices, uh, and stuff, so.
Okay, then can I get a?
It's money, and, and for clarification, uh, the, the plan runs out to twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, and without exception, we could add it on to there, and then you can always move it, but you know, the price.
Okay. Can I get a couple? It'll go into the twenty-one, twenty-two? For now?
I will, I will add one, one comment, though, Dr. Flannery, when, when you present the revised five-year plan to, um, H E W, I think I definitely could've noted that subject to revision, but, I mean, I made it subject to maybe-
Everything, don't matter. Asterisk everything, isn't it? We tried to tell them it's a live document. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Uh.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Allenworth?
Yes.
Yes.
One more thing, uh, those of you that attended the facilities meeting, we had a presentation from A S C Commercial Roofing and Waterproofing Company, and they showed us a different way, a different way to re-roof the round part of the elementary school. I'm no expert on it, and I don't even, it's a new thing, and Dr., or Mr. Patrick's not even, maybe is that correct, up to speed on how it would be done? But it was at a cost savings than re-roofing at a standard way. So, I would like to ask, request the board to approve asking the architect to write specs and request bids for both types of roofing, the standard and this new waterproofing, and that when we, uh, ask for bids, to bid it out both ways, and then, uh, see price difference, and, uh, I really, did, let me just leave that, and I'll ask for discussion. Once you get discussion, I got something else, so.
A motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hammond, discussion?
Did, in that committee, did we not ask for additional information, or was it, uh-
We asked for references.
References, have they supplied those?
I've got some of those, closest one, I think, was in Greenville, South Carolina.
Oh, really? I thought they had said, they had done something.
Well, I thought too.
Oh, okay. Well, will you all research those, uh, references? Okay, and then, by the time it comes back, maybe you'll have some information for us.
What was the warranty on that, do you remember?
Fifteen-year. And it's a silicone, is that not a correct?
It's a silicone type spray, it's made by, uh, three M. The, you know, there's pros and cons, pros and cons to everything, uh, this particular product can only be used on the round portion of the building, cannot be used on the other additions that are at Jonesburg, okay? That'll have to be just traditional re-roofing, might be done the rest of our roofs, this will just be for the round part. And, yes, if your decision to do a, what we call an ad-alternate, for that type of process on the round part would be, would be great, and we'll have to do some research to find some correct specifications for that, because we don't wanna specify a, ACS with the only process, so we have to be careful about how we word those things, and, uh, that'll also give us time to look into it, and give us time to present to you, uh, what we think of that product.
And that'll add, they've only been in business five years, so there's not a lot of information up there.
I mean, if you go, go this route of one roofing material on the round part and your traditional roofing material on the flat roofs, would you use separate contractors? Because most flat roof contractors aren't going to be using the silicone spray on stuff. That's going to be a specialized contractor.
That's correct.
And so, you know, would you, would you be, would you be open to bidding it like that so that you can get the best price on the flat roofs and the best price on the spray on? I don't know.
I'll, I'll, Mr. Street will bid it way this board and the director instructs him to do that.
Well, I mean, I just.
And you're correct, because let's say if we had a roofing contractor that was trying to get his ad, his ad alternate put on for the round part with special process, he would probably call this guy and say, give me a number on that. You're working for me on that, and I'm going to put another two percent on it.
Eight or ten.
Yeah. But, you know, it's, this guy actually can do both processes from A C S. So, you know, we got, we just, it's just a, it's uncharted territory for us, but we're certainly willing to give it a shot and let you folks make the decision on the type of roofs you like, and he'll give you a recommendation of what we think.
We looking at coming back with this at the next board meeting or is that the?
It's going to run us out another thirty days, but I would, in talking with Mr. Street today, we're probably already past getting this roof completed before school starts in the fall. So, there we are.
Probably have those plans already pulled out, ready to go.
Yeah. We, we have, because we have some budget numbers and, and we're real close, but, you know, this, this ad alternate's going to be a different. We can get it, we, you can put it on the street in the next couple of weeks.
I mean, that was one of the, you know, that was one of the drivers that we had in trying to get it, you know, get it funded.
Yes, sir. And like I say, it can be on the street in a couple of weeks, the way I, the way I understand it, but, I mean, you know, this, if y'all want to look at this process.
And that's only done in the summer?
This process?
No, but putting a new roof on.
No, we put roofs on in January and February. We have, it's, it's an ideal.
I bet not.
But, you know, and you get your best work in the summer, and you're less interruption to your.
That's what I'm.
School system and your school day.
Yeah, I mean, not to, I mean, I think Mr. Ganger's got, got a good idea to, to look at this, because it does sound like a, a different type of product that, well, both are, but, you know, are, are we giving up getting the roof completed before school starts based on a hunch that we might be able to use this different process on the round part? You know, which is obviously going to take us into the school year. So, I mean.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, only reason I bring it up, and it, and it was a significant price difference. And, I mean, in the situations we're in, I think, I think we got to look at it. I think.
If it's got five zeros associated with it, then yes. If it's three or four, maybe not. If it's five.
Contractor come with Tony Street and explain, and just let them work it out.
Explain what? I mean, to see what they assume. Tony's familiar with that, correct? I mean, they're not.
That's not the only company out there that's doing that silicone roof.
I have no idea who else does. I really don't.
It's a, a new product, though.
Really new product, yes.
I don't know.
And the fall, call facilities maybe here next week to get that figured out.
Well, they can take care of it. I mean, I don't think, you know, I mean, if they thought the business would be bad, yeah, we'll, we can put it on the, but they went back by the twenty-third, I think, next meeting is or whatever.
Can I get a couple of?
And the most she needs to do what?
So, how can I put out for being?
As an ad alternate.
We might just add all through it on.
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll pass the report around and let each of you get a copy. I'll read it to you since we just met today. All right. Does everybody get a copy? Finance Committee, sorry. Finance Committee met on Thursday, April eleventh at four P M. Once again, Department of Education Central Office, Vice President for the committee, with Chairman Phil Plank, committee members Mary Beth Dillinger, David Hammond, Director of Schools, Dr. William Flannery, Dr. Ellis Holcomb, Director of Finance, Mr. Brad Hale, committee member Todd Ganger was absent. Also in attendance were Assistant Director of Finance Angela Guin, Paul Masters, Curtis Fulbright, and Board Member Chad Flaner and Mitch Meredith. Committee considered the general fund financial statement for the month of February and two thousand and nineteen and recommends approval. Committee considered the federal fund financial statement for the month of February two thousand and nineteen, and the committee recommends approval. Committee considered a request to purchase from Sourcewell, which is a co-op agreement. This was formerly called N J P A, which was previously approved. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered a request for budget amendment number two for the dietary fund. No additional funds are being requested. This is just a reclassification of existing approved funds. Committee recommends approval. Committee considered a request for an E-rate bid to purchase items through A three communication. This will provide additional technology infrastructure at the New Boons Creek Elementary School. The E-rate bids allows for a potential sixty to eighty percent savings for these products. This would be paid out of regular technology funds budget. Committee recommends approval. Madam Chairman, I move for approval of the report.
I have a motion and a second to approve the report. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, last time.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Committee considered the general fund financial statement for the month of February two thousand and nineteen. Committee recommends approval. Make that a form of a motion.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger? Mr. Meredith? Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee considered the federal fund financial statement for the month of February two thousand and nineteen. Committee moves for approval. Second.
Discussion? Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Ah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Thank you. Committee considered a request to purchase from Sourcewell, which is a co-op agreement. This was formerly N J P A, which was previously approved. Committee moves for approval.
Second.
Thank you. This is simply a name change.
Discussion? Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Ah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Thank you, ma'am. Committee considered a request for budget amendment number two for the dietary fund. No additional funds are being requested. This is just a reclassification of existing approved funds. Committee moves for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
This is taking twenty-two thousand dollars and pulling it from one line item and moving it to.
It's over four other line items.
Four others.
It's, it's the state auditors that are wanting the dietary to classify their expenses in a little more detail. So, it's basically pulling twenty-two thousand out of their other supplies and materials line item and distributing that out to travel, office supplies, in-service staff developments, and food service equipment. In the past, all four of those items have went into other supplies. The state auditors are just wanting us to detail it out a little more.
And I might say, based on my eight-to-eight normal, regular job, it's dead on because we're, it is ugly.
It's getting a bit stricter, so.
Yes.
Rock Hallman? Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Mr. Meredith?
Ah.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Thank you, ma'am. Committee considered a request for an E-rate bid to purchase items through A three communications. This will provide additional technology infrastructure at the New Boons Creek School. The E-rate bid allows for a potential sixty to eighty percent savings for these products. This would be paid out of regular technology funds budget. Committee moves for approval. Second, and I do have a question. I hope there's somebody here that can answer.
Well, it, it has to do with dollars, so I'm hoping Mr. Hale has it. So, what are we, we're going to have a sixty to eighty percent savings. Do we know what our projected cost is going to be?
We do. Forty-eight thousand.
Okay.
That's before the discount.
Before the discount.
Before the discount.
Depending on how many free reduced lunch kids we have at this school, we'll determine. If we have enough, it could go all the way down to twenty percent of that forty-eight thousand.
Okay, okay.
But it's equipment that we have to have.
Right, right, for the, for the.
Right.
I, I, I missed the dollar amount.
So, what is the infrastructure that we're talking about?
Internet.
Just the internet?
Switches for.
It's.
The equipment, this thing.
Is audio, is audio enhancement in there?
Not in this.
No. It's the big cloud.
Rock Hallman? Mr. Stellinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flaner?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Ganger?
Ah.
Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Did pass.
Thank you, ma'am. That completes my report. Have a good evening.
Awesome.
Okay. The Policy Committee met today at three-thirty to review policies for first and second readings. The following committee members were in attendance. Chairman Mary Beth Dillinger, Philip Plank, Director of Schools, Dr. Flannery, Dr. Kieran, Committee Advisor, Dr. Keys. The following committee members were absent. Mitch Meredith and Chad Flaner. Okay, the following policies were reviewed, and the recommendation of the Policy Committee is to approve on first reading. Four point four zero six one, social media, and six point three one six one, use of foods as reward slash punishment. I move for approval. We accept these on first reading.
I'm open. You got copies?
Doesn't have mine. If you want, if you want to look them up. She's got them. I said, thank you, Dr. Keys.
Yeah, I just got the one that was, it was just one that dropped off in the first reading.
We just had it today. The one you missed, we just had it today.
Yeah, yeah, I need a copy of that and stuff that's been dropped off.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Bring the doctor's excuse next time. And he used the excuse he didn't know that was the time.
I knew it was. I just couldn't get there.
Okay, I need an approval of the report. Thank you. Do I hear an approval of the report?
You have made a free roll report. I'll second that.
Okay, yes.
She's going to voice vote it right here.
Okay, we're ready.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
The report.
Okay, and this.
I got the first and second. Do I need?
Master reporter.
All in favor?
Yes.
Oh, for the fourth, okay. Sorry, I got a little sidetracked there. All in favor to accept the report, say aye.
Ah.
All opposed, last time. Mr. Stellinger?
Okay, well, I move for approval. We accept these on first reading.
I'd like, I'll second that, and then I'd like to have.
Okay, discussion.
Well, let me say this first. You need to read the policies. We got it in the minutes, the number, so we got it in the minutes so we know what we're approving.
I thought I read the number.
When you make your motion, I just would like for you to say that way. Jennifer knows what first reading, what we're approving on first reading.
Four point four zero six one, social media, six point three one six one, use of foods as reward slash punishment. Is there any, is, are we all ready?
Discussion.
I'm so lost now.
There's a motion. Was there a second?
Yes, Chad.
Okay.
And then I'd like to say something. I recently, I, I was talking about this use of rewards and punishment for foods. And it came up, there was a student at a school that it was his birthday, and his mom was raising him, bringing cookies and stuff like that to his, to the school. Well, you can't do that at a particular school, because I guess that was their motion. We're going to ready to make this active for every school in Washington County. And I know there was a fellow there that bought cookies from a store so he could have some for his birthday. Wow. I'm not sure we want to do that. Mr. White.
It's a toughy, Chair.
Yeah, it's tough.
It's tough.
Because it's on the haves and the have-nots.
Mr. Hammond?
Could we postpone that one on first reading? I'd like, I mean, I'm not really, I agree with Chad.
Well, it's first reading, so, I mean, it's not going into the books or nothing. You know, we'll have second reading on it. So, I mean, we're not doing anything, is what I'm saying.
Right, okay. We're not approving on first reading.
Yeah, we would be approving on first reading if we voted for it, but it'd have to come back to us again for second reading, is what I'm saying. So, if you're not doing anything, you're not, it's not going into policy until it's been approved by second reading, so.
And there's not a P C A citation on that one, is there? Is there?
I mean, I see the need, but I'm, I'm kind of, I'm borderline on this one.
I just, I just worry about kids with, but, you know, Dr. Keys has talked about cross-contamination with kids that have, well, peanuts, celiac, gluten, all those types of things. And when you make them from home, it's made with love, but you don't know what's in it. And it boils down to safety of our kids.
You're right.
I mean, I know, you know, with, with my child, there's, if you're in the classroom with a certain kid, you can't take peanut butter for snack. I get that. We don't have a problem with that. We just don't send peanut butter for snack because it's in the best interest of that child. So, if you can read the ingredients on there, you know if that kid can have it. For me, it's, it's just, it's about the safety of our children. I, I know it's a, it's a double-edged sword both ways.
Question. So, this is first reading, and this is a procedural question for me. All right, so if we pass this tonight, but there, there is a desire to change the wording in it in some way, shape, or form, when and how does that occur? Does it have to be in an amendment to it when it comes back to second reading? Or does it go to the Policy Committee for second reading consideration and then to the board?
I'll let Dr. Flannery answer that.
Me too.
There is no necessity of a Policy Committee whatsoever. This board can take any policy action it wants to anytime it needs.
Right.
If you change it in the ensuing thirty days or until you have an addition, until you look at this on second reading, then it reverses back to first reading.
Oh, so we.
With your policy.
So, if we change the wording in it, it then goes from being second reading back to first?
We're going to have, we can discuss it, because we're going to have to have another whole policy workshop again in the end of April so we can use this time to do research or whatever. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Can I make a motion then that we table six point three one six one and basically separate them, but I want to table six point three one six one?
One caveat, there's nothing in the law that says there has to be two readings. There's only one. There's only fourteen county readings. Now, there is one policy you have that requires thirty-day public notice, and I can't even remember what it was, but it's not this one.
I need to have one question about the name of the policy. Use of foods as reward punishment.
That goes back probably thirty years. I don't know why it's having to go.
I've got a motion to table one, I've got a second, so I'll roll call vote.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So, well...
We're still got a motion on that first reading.
The social media, right. Four point four zero six one.
It's still on the table. Yeah. He just moved that.
And I have a motion and a second on the social media first reading. Yeah, discussion.
Four point four oh six one.
Four point four oh six one. Yes, sir. Discussion.
Roll call vote. Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes ma'am.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Okay, the following policies were reviewed and the recommendation of the Policy Committee is to approve on second reading and final reading. One point eight zero three, it's tobacco vaping free schools. Two point four zero zero revenues. Six point two zero three, school admissions. Six point two zero four, attendance of non-resident students. Six point two zero five, student assignments. Six point two zero six, transfers within the system. And six point two zero five one, criteria for admittance to closed enrollment schools. I move for approval, we accept these on second and final reading.
I missed a moment.
Yeah, that last one, was it?
The five oh, two oh five one.
It was the issue...it was right behind on mine, because it was behind the revenues.
Right here it is, nevermind. I stand corrected.
I have a second.
Second.
Is there discussion?
Well, a question for Dr. Keys. Our first reading one highlighted the things that were changed. But on the second reading ones, we don't really see that.
We didn't change anything from first to second reading, except on the tobacco vaping free schools, we changed the wording in line fifteen. Revenues, we changed the wording in ten and eleven. On ten, eleven.
So the others, if it's not highlighted, there wasn't any change?
Exactly.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
You changed this from first reading?
Which one?
One point eight oh three?
Did the committee request that changed at first reading?
Yes.
And that's all of them that was changed? Because you said the wording changed though.
There was a request to change the wording from tobacco-free schools to tobacco-vaping free schools. And then in line fifteen, TSB policy said smoking is prohibited by law, and the board asked that we change that to use of tobacco products, including vaping is prohibited by law.
So all changes made on these second readings were made in first reading?
They were requested when we did the policy on March eleven, I think, yeah, March eleven. And then any additional changes were changed after that first reading, and now bringing it to a second reading with the changes you requested.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Aye.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Staff reports.
General has dropped this in today. I'm asking for approval of the textbook adoption committee's recommendations. On October second, twenty eighteen, you have approved the committee that is listed on this report, and they have diligently reviewed the books that we did have to review. I must say, this might be the year that we've had the least number of sample copies. And I think it has a lot to do with social studies having changed and being...the standards being rolled out as late as they were. So we have fewer copies, samples of social studies. We had more world languages than probably the others, and then the high school CTE programs, everything's listed on there that our committees deemed worthy of being adopted by Washington County schools. And as I have told them before, this is all subject to budget being available for purchase. You will see the cost of each hardback textbook here on the right-hand column, and that's per book. And most of the teachers and others that have been involved have recommended a classroom set. We'll...I'll be working with Mr. Hale, we have a meeting tomorrow, and we're to look at budget and see where we are.
Classroom set per grade level?
Yes.
Is there a question, sir?
Pardon me?
How many would that constitute?
Well, it depends. If it's high school French, then it would be probably a thirty...thirty books. If it's fourth grade, we're...if we're looking at one teacher, and she has a classroom set and the kids rotate, that's one thing, and it's just kinda school by school.
What about the...what about the world history and the US geography, because don't we have more than one teacher per...
Section of those. We're probably looking at, I said, at least per teacher there.
But it says six-year access on...is that online then, or is that actual?
Most of our textbooks have an access, electronic access.
I'm sorry, you may have said that wrong.
No, and that...they also have resources online, so if their hard textbook, hardback textbook is purchased, if you have a video in there that goes with it, that's readily available for classrooms.
I move for approval of the textbook adoption recommendations. Second.
Discussion?
This is just simply stating that these would be the textbooks that are added to an existing list.
That we would purchase if we purchase.
So if we buy it...I mean, do we have enough...is this all the textbooks that we use, or do we have...
That's all the textbook for this year's cycle. We have six cycles. It's math one year, reading one year, social studies and CTE one year.
I mean, just being new on the board, could...you know, we've done this probably year...every year.
Yes.
Could you get a copy that was...of us, of the textbooks on each cycle that we're looking at right now? But this is not a commitment to purchase textbooks, because that, I think I heard you say you're gonna be working on...
Meeting with Mr. Hale tomorrow, and then it would not be...there wouldn't be a decision made on that if it stays in the budget until the final budget's passed.
I'd like to be a fly on the wall if you're getting me to figure out, see how y'all...
It's fun.
Slice and dice this thing. Yeah, I bet. Hope y'all read them all.
Roll call vote, please. Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Mr. Gangler?
Aye.
Mr. Meredith?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. Dallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Flannery?
Yes ma'am.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes. New business, did we see you?
Been waiting all evening to congratulate a Silver Spring student on being a valedictorian again, Silver Spring student, and then in high school. Ms. Allen and I, and who was your third grade teacher?
Oh, gosh.
Mr. Lott or Fontaine or...
It was Fontaine.
It was Fontaine?
Yeah.
But then you were with Mr. Lott in the chess team?
Yep, yep.
They would both be so proud of you. That's real. Thank you so much for your support for this legislative session. Do you know we're finding tooth and nail to get what's best for public education? And one other thing. Ms...Dr. Kirman, do you remember another Mr. Good who used to drive a school bus through the community many years ago? It wasn't library books. Does anybody else remember that, know what I'm talking about? There was a man who drove a school bus on the north side of the county, and I remember going on the bus and buying M&amp;M's and a Coke. We won't be doing that. No. We tried to get food. Yeah, we tried.
No concessions on the bus?
No. But that was a popular bus. That wasn't one, that was a party bus. Thank you.
No, I'd like to just say something. You know, going back to them six hundred and six teachers, I know all of them's not a part of the union, but I do want you to pass along that each one of them are special, and I'm glad to have them, glad to have you all representing.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Roundtable, Mr. Gangler?
There's, you know, talking about the legislation and stuff that's going on, you know, we're on a nut and pill battle from here on out, I'm afraid. But we've got to...we just...it's hard...I don't want to badmouth anybody, but I mean, it's...we're gonna have to work to keep public education where it's at. And it's...it's gonna take us doing resolutions, it's gonna take us reaching out, it's gonna... I personally feel like sometimes we're not being heard, and that's by our locals. I don't say it, but you know, we're just gonna keep, you know, chipping away at it. And I'm afraid eventually it's gonna get here, but you know, let's keep pushing it off, to push it off, and keep public education, you know, at the forefront. So I appreciate all you all that are reaching out and doing what you can do, because I know it's not a fun thing at all, but I appreciate you just doing that. One thing I do want to ask of this board is, when we make a motion, when you make a motion, and I'll talk to the chairman about it when I see him, these should be clearly stated. We're not...so moved is not a motion. If you're making a motion, say what you're wanting to make a motion for, and wait it gets in the minutes correctly, that way it's not look back on six months down the road and say, well, that's not what I meant by, or anything like that. And I'm not calling anybody out, because I'm probably the worst. But you know, just if you're gonna make a motion, let's just clearly state what the motion is, and that way, you know, it's just recorded. And I think...I think we've kind of veered away from that a little bit, and I'd just like to see us kind of get back together and know what the motion is fully when we go to vote. Had one other thing, but I've lost that, so go on.
Mr. Flannery?
Well, I want to say that, you know, I hate that the Shapley family's going through what they're going through, and Keith, our prayers and thoughts are with you. I miss my other friend. He usually keeps us pretty lively over here sometimes with...you know, he'd be dying right now to get home, so he'd tell me to be quiet, but he's not here tonight, so. But I did want to say, you know, the six hundred and six teachers, again, going back to them, I mean, it's just incredible. More you make some, and I didn't get to go on the school visits this year, and it's my fault, and I apologize for that, but when I do have interactions with them, it's just incredible. It's no wonder our kids turn out the way they do, like John Maddox and Ainsley and the others we have. I mean, it's because of you guys and because of our administrators, and it starts up top and it flows all the way down. I mean, it really does. I mean, Officer Richard tonight, with me and him was talking, I mean, even he's got a heart for the kids. And it's just...it's a testament of what we have in this county, and we're proud of. And, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, Ms. Hayes over Boons Creek, I wish I could've said this when she was here, but you know, I really thought we'd done a good thing when we announced to us getting the new Boons Creek School with first, you know, as early as we could. But man, she's had a hard time, you know, through it, just because of some of the interactions, you know, people don't know what's going on, this, that, and the other, but it's a true testament to who that lady is. And she deserves everybody's respect, and she's done a heck of a job out there. And just want to say, maybe open Boons Creek up, be interested to see what happens. And I thank you, John, appreciate you serving with you. You've been an honor, and wish you nothing but the best, and just a real pleasure being up here with you.
Sounds okay. Congratulations to the Asbury graduates. The Willy Wonka performance by Ridgeview was great. Daniel Boone, that was such a good PowerPoint and trip to Charleston, it's rich in history. I'm glad our students get to go, we approve these field trips, because that's just wonderful. Congratulations to Crockett's FFA. Congratulations to our Teacher of the Year, Jackie Mumpower, Brooke Price, and Kathy Reynolds. And thank you, John, you've done a great job, appreciate you. And Ms. Buchanan did a great job tonight, filling in for our chairman, thank you.
All right, I just want to say thank you for, you know, having me as a representative. It's, you know, it's always great to just see the work that you guys do for our county. And I think it's just, it's always well-represented in the meeting. This duality of both celebrating the successes and the amazing things that are going on in the county, with things like the "We Are Washington County" and having the teachers come and speak and having these performances, but also, you know, working to address the issues that, you know, the people have. It's always just great being here and, you know, seeing both sides of that. I'm just truly thankful for having the experience.
Well, I'll try to be really quick, but you know, we're coming down the end of the year, and so I wish all the administrators and teachers and students the best as they make the final push here through the last few weeks of school. And for those that are seniors, we've enjoyed having you. We hope that Washington County's been good to you in terms of preparing you for your future endeavors. We wish all of you a lot of success going forward, looking forward to the Top Ten banquet coming up soon. And just a recommendation to kind of go along with Mr. Gangler's concern about motions, is have them in written form on the agenda before you even get here, and then you know exactly what you're voting on.
Great meeting, we've seen the best of the best tonight, from our teachers, administrators, the students. Hearts and prayer, heart and prayer, prayerful thoughts from Keith and Lisa, and appreciate John being here, and I wish you well.
Thank you ma'am. Hearing him talk about Charleston sure brought back some memories for me. I think most of you know I spent a little time in the United States Navy, based out of Charleston, South Carolina. The entertainers from Ridgeview were fantastic. Sometimes we wonder where this sixty-eight million dollars that we spend each year on education in this county, where it goes and how it ends up. And we saw the results of some of it tonight, not only with the kids and John and the singers that were here. We've got a marvelous system. We've got a marvelous set of bunch of teachers that do an outstanding job. Wish we could give them a bigger raise than we usually do. That's how much I think about it, but... The FFA folks that were here. I have one of those National Blue Jackets. Don't go dry cleaner, shrunken, I can't wear it anymore. That's my story, and I'm sticking with it. Looking forward to Monday night. Good night.
Okay, so I get this by time. So, John, I want to know how appreciative I am of you being willing to serve and hanging in here with us sometimes. I truly do appreciate your input, because I think it's very sincere, I think it's very thoughtful, and I think you drew something to this table that nobody else can bring to this table. It is graduation season, I enjoyed so much graduation at the beginning of our meeting, it just sets a wonderful tone. And while we're here, I love graduation season, it's my favorite time of the year. They rise to their accomplishments, and it's just so wonderful. The chairman has sent a message to us, and he wanted to apologize for not being here, and he's watched every bit of the meeting, and it has been a...
being here, and that he's watched every bit of the meeting, and it has been an interesting meeting, and thank you all. Housekeeping, April fifteenth is the top ten percent banquet, seven PM at the Millennial Center, please park on the third through sixth floors of the parking garage, the bottom two belong to the Carnegie. April twenty-third is a called meeting for the budget at five thirty.
Wait just one second, we're going with screen, I have to wait.
Jeff will send them, and I-
Oh, never mind.
And we need to schedule a called meeting for policy, now we get your calendar.
But we were thinking, April the, that Monday, April twenty-ninth, Dr. Keys, is that what we've discussed?
Yes.
If possible.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Monday, April twenty-ninth. That Thursday, May, our board meeting next month will be, it'll really be three weeks, because it'll be May the second, so if we could get it in before that.
Can we do it Wednesday night, the first? I've got a conflict, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, twenty-ninth, we got collaborative conferencing.
Well, that's what they discussed, what did they decide about the collaborative conferencing? Dr. Finn.
Well, you had mentioned during the policy meeting today, possibly starting policy at six thirty, so collaborative conferencing could most likely be over with by six, we'd have, if we set time constraints, we'd just end them.
But you wanted us to try to move it to-
Can we do it the first? I know it's Wednesday night.
I can't on the first, I have obligations.
Well, I have committee meetings that week, too.
That's true, but I wouldn't think we would Monday, but, well, if we go up, we could do it the twenty-fifth, we've already got the budget workshop on Tuesday, do we want to do another one that week on a Thursday? No, she said no. We need to get it in before the next board meeting, May second, so.
I ask why?
That's fine, why?
Well, you were wanting to get into the section, fifth section, weren't you? Or do we, can we roll it out? I think Mr. Urban had asked me to try to find one in this time, did you?
Yeah.
We still have all of section five and section six for T S B A review, on top of every table policy. Start, I've turned over section one to T S B A, and that's it.
Well-
Which point?
And your meaning is?
Can everybody, I hate, you know, exclude you, but can everybody else meet that Monday?
Which one?
The twenty-ninth, I'm sorry.
No, 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 don't be sorry.
Okay.
Monday, the twenty-ninth?
At six thirty.
Yeah, they've all worked for me so far.
When's your commission meeting, the twenty-second?
Oh, because you- Uh, yeah. Not my commission, right? Commission meets the twenty-second.
Well, don't you have to be there?
Yeah, sometimes it's better not to.
Okay, okay, so, what do you say? It's better not to, May the twenty-ninth, at six thirty, is that, is that okay with everybody, but, okay. All right.
You mean April the twenty-ninth?
April the twenty-ninth, I'm stuck on my, on my-
And that's policy.
That's policy. Okay. Attard.